Welcome, everybody, to the City Council meeting of June 17th, 2020. This is Mayor Serge Dina calling the meeting to order. Council members and staff, please mute your phone and speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name. I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting on June 17th, 2020, and thank everyone for their patience, understanding as we continue to improve our teleconference meeting process. This meeting must comply with Executive Order N2920 and all other provisions of state law. We hope everyone is at home, safe and healthy, and we appreciate your cooperation with the state home order and other actions to keep you safe. City Clerk will now announce the public comment process.
Good evening. This is City Clerk Kelly. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments for any item on the agenda now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov as there will be no break in between agenda items. Please note in the subject line the item on the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just entered into the record. Please note that only the first 100 words will be read aloud so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. Please submit comments now for public comment or the consent calendar portion of the meeting. Comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comments for that item is closed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, City Clerk Kelly. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Patton.
Patton here.
Councilmember West.
West here.
Councilmember Spriggs.
Spriggs here with a bad connection.
Mayor Protem Agiri.
Agiri here.
And Mayor Dedina.
Mayor Dedina here. This is Mayor Dedina. Please join us in a moment of silence for all those across the globe impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and continued racial injustices in our country and throughout the world. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to begin the council update and disclosures on assignments and committees meeting section of the evening, not starting with Councilmember Patton. Thank you.
Pledge first?
Yeah, you can go first.
Do you want me to do the pledge?
Yes, so thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no worries. It'd be my honor. I put right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And now we can commence the, this is Mayor Dedina, the communications portion from City Council members, starting with Councilmember Patton. Thank you.
Yes. Just real quick, I just want to say congratulations to all the teachers here in Imperial Beach and everywhere in California and United States for three months of distance teaching and learning in uncharted territory. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember West.
Yes, so it's budget, budget, budget season. So if you, if anybody, the, anybody would like to know, we've definitely gone over the budget at the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority and also the San Diego Clean Power. So if you have any questions of those, try to keep that short because we have a long agenda tonight. So please contact me if you have any questions. But some highlights from the last past week, on June 8th, we kicked off the first Business Roundtable out in our intermediate phase of COVID to where we're really working with our businesses to see how they're operating and how this is working towards as we move forward in this intermediate phase. To date, most of the businesses are open in Imperial Beach. Only ones that remain closed are nail salons and massage therapists. So all the other ones should be open. It's some type of format, obviously reduced, but we're starting to slowly get back to normal a little bit. But I don't think any of these businesses are at any normal level because it's, all of them are at reduced capacity. So then on June 11th, I was honored to be a part of with San Diego County Regional Chamber, South County Economic Development Council, in the first bi-national committee meeting where we had reps from Tijuana and Rosarides Business Leaders, elected leaders, and leaders from around our region as well, which included the San Diego Airport and different business leaders. Really focused on, you know, as we're weathering this, the COVID, how are businesses opening up and how are they maintaining it? And, you know, the challenge that Mexico is seeing right now, they're two to four weeks behind where we are right now. And so they're really in a lockdown mode and trying to, they're trying to learn from us on some ways that we have weathered this storm and how we can move forward. So it was a great, great meeting, two-day event. I look forward to, Jim O'Callaghan is leading that, and it's going to be a great learning experience for all as we really try to figure out how to make sure that our border remains as the dynamic economic engine that it is for Southern California. So I do want to shed a little bit of good news. I am so proud of a couple things. The South County, the Ivy Arts Bureau during COVID has been the little engine that could. I recommend to anybody that go on 13th Street between Ivy Boulevard and the base, and you'll see they joined with SDG&E to finish and paint most of the utility boxes down 13th Street. And it's all art that was done by students at Emory School, so Emory Elementary. So it's really, really inspiring, and there's some great art, and it's all kids, and it's just really great to see and some happiness that's being spread. And that's all on 13th Street. I highly recommend that you go by. And then also, last but not least, I want to call attention to an upcoming event that's going to be kicking off on July 3rd, and that's our IB Active and the Ivy Arts Bureau is working to put together a alternative transportation scavenger hunt to go to all of these unique places in Ivy and learn about our city and, you know, learn about some of the crazy things that are all around our community, including there's a giant dragon. I don't know if you guys have seen it yet, but these are things that we're wanting people to get out on their bikes or scooters or whatever and go and see as a family where they can do that together and still maintain physical distancing from other people and do it at their leisure when they want to do it. And we've teamed up with the business community and raised some funds to make sure that we're going to be giving away prizes. And details will be coming out, but that's, that's going to, it's a two-week event going from July 3rd through July 17th. So more details to follow, and that's my update. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember West. Councilmember Spriggs. Councilmember Spriggs, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, okay.
Give me a second unmute. I attended two meetings of the Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee of the League of California Cities, one on the 5th, one just this morning, because of the number of housing proposals that the league needs to take a position on, one of which was by our esteemed Senate President Protem Tony Atkins that would have proposed, proposes duplexes in single-family areas by right in addition to the existing legislation that allows similar rights to property owners to develop accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. So this would be on top of those, which could allow anywhere from six to eight units on a single-family lot in towns like Imperial Beach and many, many others across the state. Out of respect for, for President Protem Atkins, we, the policy committee did not vote to reject the proposal outright, but rather to support it if amended by taking out some of the more onerous provisions and getting some clarifications regarding just how much density is this going to put on one lot without any additional parking allowed? And that we would prefer either go with the ADUs or go with the duplex, but not both. So that's going to be worked on, and I had proposed some of those changes because they would have a devastating impact on Imperial Beach. I also attended the Metro JPA meeting on the 4th, and no, no real major actions affecting Imperial Beach other than the approval of the Metro JPA budget. Well, this is a major action, I guess, because of savings due to delays in some of the major projects. Our share of the Metro JPA dues, as well as those of other participating agencies, are going to be reduced substantially because of the carryforward positive balances due to some of the actions not taking place. Because essentially, pure water is behind schedule by about a year. Finally, looking at the charts and graphs regarding COVID-19, it looks like Imperial Beach is still running way above the county average per capita. And I think it just means that as we continue to reopen, we all have to encourage all of our residents to be responsible and to wear masks when out in public when they're in any proximity to their people and certainly when they're inside a place of business. And to maintain spatial distancing, we really have to get on top of this, and we haven't turned the corner yet in Imperial Beach, and we've got to work to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spriggs, and that reminder on the public health crisis that we still are facing. Appreciate that and how we can stay safe. Mayor Protem Agiri.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended on behalf of MTS as MTS representative, the Sandag Board Meeting on Friday, June 12th, where the 2021 final program budget was adopted. And then on Sunday, June 14th, I attended the Black Lives Matter March. It was quite incredible and inspiring to see so many families come out in support of black lives in Imperial Beach and condemn anti-blackness and racism and elevate the voices of our Black Indigenous and people of color who have been subjected to discrimination and mistreatment by others. And then on June 16th, District Attorney Summer Stephan reached out to the mayor and myself to inform us that the assault that took place the Sunday before against Mr. Boy during the Black Lives Matter March, the first one, has been referred to her office by our Sheriff Department. Our Ivy Sheriffs conducted a very thorough investigation and referred the case last Friday. The DA Stephan expressed that this is a very, very high priority case for her office, as it has and was for the Ivy Sheriff's Department, and they will be looking at all potential charges, including potentially this be, it's brought as a hate crime. It's being led by Mr. Leonard Trin, who is the head prosecutor for the Hate Crimes Department at the DA's office. And then finally, I just want to invite everyone, if you can, to log into tomorrow's MTS Board Meeting. Starts at 9:00 AM tomorrow. We will be bringing forth to the entire board our, our Fair Evasion Pilot Program, which we, you know, approved during the Public Security Committee that I am vice chair of, where we want to move towards decriminalization of fair evasions. Because for a lot of people, they end up with significant debt when it has to go through the court system. And as a, an article that was published today in The Voice of San Diego points out, for some folks, it means even debt up to $4,000 without them even knowing, which obviously impacts severely their credit and their ability to apply to jobs and for housing. So for more information, please log on to our website. The MTS information on how to virtually log on to tomorrow's meeting is under our city's page under Transportation. So that's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Agiri. Just, this is Mayor Dedina, just as an update to the meeting with District Attorney Summer Stephan and then Deputy DA Leonard Trin. They did offer to also hold a town hall meeting that they have done in many other jurisdictions on the issue of hate crimes. They have apparently tripled the number of prosecutions for hate crimes under the administration of Summer Stephan. So we definitely will follow up with them and look forward to having helped to host that important forum. On June 12th, I attended the Sandag meeting, virtually, of course, and of interest to the city of Imperial Beach, I think all our residents, was the announcement by Caltrans that they will begin to address the plague of garbage that lines our state highways. I know anybody who's gone on to the freeway at the end of Palm Avenue or Highway 75, onto the 5 North has probably been either crying or astounded or angry or out as outraged as I have been by the piling of garbage everywhere. In fact, in my 56 years in California, probably of which 52 years I do remember driving on the freeway in California, I have never seen more trash on our highways ever. In fact, I don't think anywhere else in the world that I've been, Africa, South America, Central America, Mexico, Europe, or anywhere else in the United States have I seen more trash than we've seen on our highways. In fact, the executive director, I love Clean San Diego, mentioned to me today, he thinks it looks like we look like a third-world country, which I agree. The thing about that is that the regional water board, apparently the Caltrans is immune from prosecution or oversight of their clean water permits. They don't have to clean up that trash, they're not required to, as I understand it. And so what happens is when that trash washes down into our bays and waterways, then each individual jurisdiction, like the city of Imperial Beach, is then required by law, our stormwater permit to clean that trash up. So Catherine Blake Spear, the mayor of San Diego, has proposed having a subcommittee at Sandag in partnership with Caltrans to oversee and hold Caltrans accountable for that trash. I seconded that today in a very strongly written email to Caltrans and Sandag that seconded that proposal. I think it's really important that we get a handle on all this trash that is washing into our waterways and frankly is an embarrassment to San Diego as arguably having some of the filthiest freeways and dirtiest roadways in the entire United States. So I hope we can get moving on that quickly. And I think it's important that each jurisdiction, that every state agency must be held accountable, the same accountability that all of us are required to. We're not allowed to throw trash on the roadway, neither is our city allowed to dump trash on the roadway. But apparently, in California now, our California Highway Agency is allowed to let that, that, that trash stay on the road. It's up to the CHP, California Highway Patrol, to actually prevent that trash from being, from flying off of trucks and cars. And so that needs to also happen. The CHP needs to do a much better job of enforcing our trash laws as well. So with that, we'll move on. Now we have a communication from staff, and I know Chief French would like to share a friendly reminder about pool safety.
Fire Chief John French, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to come tonight and talk a little bit about pool and water safety. At this time last year, I presented at the City Council meeting the water and pool safety tips, and I handed out whistles with a water watcher tag. So with the beaches opening back up, swimming pools, having people come back to them now, and with over 200 swimming pools in our, private swimming pools in our city, drowning is preventable. Drowning has been the leading cause of accidental death for children in our county, and children can drown quickly and silently in a matter of seconds. So as a public safety partner here and a public safety official, I just want to remind people the importance of watching the pools, watching the beach, even when we do have lifeguards. Our kids are our responsibility. And at any pool, there should be a designated water watcher. Parents get distracted. So there should be a designated water watcher. And a few tips, keep a constant watch on all children in and around the water. Do not get distracted by electronic devices or socializing. And once you're relieved of being the water watcher, you hand that off to another responsible adult. So what I'm going to do is post these water and pool safety tips on our website and on our social media, and you'll see banners around town like you did last year that remind people to constantly watch their kids, watch the water, and know how important it is and how quick a kid can drown. Drowning is preventable, but as adults, we have to prevent it.
Anything else, Chief French?
That's it.
Thank you so much for that important message. I do remember vividly last year's presentation, and I would hope that our city, our communication staff can develop some messaging for social media so we can get out that and promote that. It's one of the most important messages we have, we give out all year. So, and why we have such an active fire department, as well as obviously our lifeguard. So it's former lifeguard, I know how quickly infants and kids can disappear from view in the water. My own personal, I realize we have to have personal, you know, the watcher. As an adult, I don't let anybody else take care of my kids when they're in the water. I will always make sure that I took the responsibility for watching my kids, but obviously want to make sure that everybody, that designated watcher is an excellent idea. And, and just to remind everybody, it's amazing how fast kids can go underwater. It's, it's crazy how fast it happens. I know Councilmember Patton, I'm sure has lots of stories to tell about that as well. And now we have City Manager Hall have some announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the city's recent receipt of a verified withdrawal of a citizen initiative on cannabis delivered to the city yesterday by the proponent, city staff requests that the council remove item three under reports from the agenda. And at the request of council members, staff requests that we move item four under reports to the first item under reports. So if we could get a motion from the council making those adjustments to the agenda, we'd appreciate it. And that's the end of my announcements. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. This is Mayor Dedina. Is there a motion?
Councilmember, move.
Agiri, second.
City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
This is City Clerk Kelly. I will now take a roll call vote, saying "aye" is a vote in favor of the item and "no" is a vote against. There has been a motion by West, seconded by Agiri, to remove report item number three from the agenda and to move item number four to the first item under the reports section. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote? Councilmember Patton. We'll move on. Councilmember West.
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs.
Spriggs, aye.
Count, Mayor Protem Agiri.
Agiri, aye.
Mayor Dedina.
Dedina, aye.
Councilmember Patton, are you there? I'll just go ahead and call the vote. Motion.
Wait, Patton's here.
How do you vote, Mr. Patton?
Aye. Sorry, my screen went blank.
Okay, thank you. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to remind everybody, for the council members and staff, to please mute your phones. Anyway, thank you so much. And now, City Clerk Kelly, do we have any comments received? You know?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two comments. The first comment does not have a name. I'll just say it's Glassy2000. What is being done about the speeding and traffic on Elm Avenue? Since reducing the lanes on Palm Avenue, Elm is now a main thoroughfare. It is excessive. Palm looks great, and you've made Elm Avenue become very unpleasant. Besides the increase in traffics, speeding is out of control and dangerous. I don't know why Donix has been closed. Those few short blocks, but Elm needs attention desperately. And the last public comment is from Mike Harris, and he says, "Folks, just wondering what information, if any, does the mayor have pertaining to the nasty punching that took place at the recent demonstration? I could not via the circulated video make out the ethnicity of the offending party. Just wondering what evidence exists to label this violence as a white supremacy problem. It is racially motivate, if it is racially motivated, we need to hear facts so as to support the allegation of this being a white supremacist problem. If there are no supporting facts, likewise, it would be nice to know this. Either way, a hate crime label should not be tolerated unless true. Such a claim needs to be substantiated with evidence. Such a label would not be used lightly. Conversely, claims of racial intolerance needs to be fully exposed and allegations need to have articulated backing." And that was the last comment, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you so much. The public, I'm sorry. The public comment period is now closed, and now we have presentations one and two. Consider, number, item number one is a consideration of proclamation for Bob Penner, outgoing chair for the South County EDC. City Clerk, do you have any comments received? The email on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, no comments received.
Great. The public comment period is now closed. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the proclamation for Bob Penner, outgoing chair for South County EDC.
West, so moved.
Patton, second.
Thank you. Now, City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by West, seconded by Patton, to approve the proclamation for Bob Penner. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
And Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much. And now, Councilmember West will present the proclamation.
Sorry about that. So, you know, Bob has been an amazing individual for South County EDC, and he's really worked to build something that I think is very unique for our region. He's really been the, kind of the leader behind making South County the cyber and drone capital of San Diego, which is really interesting. In fact, some of those, some of those drone companies are actually, one of the drone companies is actually right here in Imperial Beach. So, but, so whereas, under Bob's leadership, the South County EDC has successfully completed the 2019 Annual Accomplishments Performance Report for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It successfully completed the I'm Ready Pilot Program, where 18 students graduated and got connected to internships at local South County companies. It successfully led and executed the South County EDCs, and this is really important because one of our businesses got, two of our businesses got loans from them, the Emergency Business Loan Program during the toughest economic times due to the COVID-19 pandemic, by issuing more than 30 loans to businesses in South County, primarily restaurants that stayed open during stay-at-home orders. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Imperial Beach, together with the city council, recognize and commend Bob Penner for his exemplary efforts as South County EDC Chair from July 2019 to June 30th, 2020. This is dated June 17th, 2020. So moved.
Thank you so much, Mr. West. We do appreciate his service and all the service from the South County EDC. And now we have item number two, consideration of proclamation of Black Lives Matter. City Clerk Kelly, do you have any public comments received? The email?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have five comments. The first one is from Sandy Brilhart. "I strongly support this and encourage council not only to approve this proclamation, but to also be cognizant of the impacts of racism on all issues before the council, housing, health, education, economic opportunity, and community services." Thank you. The second comment is from Richard Pilgrim. "Mayor Dedina, council members and city staff, my name is Richard Pilgrim, and he provides his address, and he has lived here since 1987. I wholeheartedly support this proclamation with no reservations. I have witnessed and probably unknowingly participated in indignities perpetuated on Black citizens at many times and places in my 83 years. As the proclamation declares, I too acknowledge with sadness and disappointment that in 2020, it is still necessary to have to affirm this simple statement of racial equality." That in twenty twenty, it is still necessary to have to affirm this simple statement of racial equality. But I also rejoice in living in Imperial Beach, a city with a proclamation declares celebrates its diversity, inclusion and rich cultural history. I want to shout it from the rooftops that the city of Imperial Beach declares that the lives of our black residents matter. The lives of our black families matter and that all black lives matter. Sincerely, Richard Pilgrim. This comment is from Josephine T. Hamada. Dear Imperial Beach Mayor and City Council Members. I support the city of Imperial Beach in recognizing to support all of its citizens. And I fully support this item before the council tonight. The next message is from Beatriz Sanchez Blevins. Dear City Council, I support the Black Lives Matter proclamation. In addition, this resident requests that the city of Imperial Beach follow in the footsteps of the city of San Diego. In requesting the county of San Diego to create an office of equity and inclusion. Imperial Beach's most vulnerable residents are affected by the social service programs administered by the county. And the city contracts for law enforcement through the county. Respectfully, Beatriz Sanchez Blevins. The next message is from Leonard Miranda. It's over one hundred words, but I will read up to that point. Tonight's comments are directed to Mayor DeDina as the signer of the proposed proclamation on Black Lives Matter. If this were the late nineteen sixties, I would be overjoyed and encouraged by this proclamation. However, in twenty twenty, I am not encouraged but disappointed. Do black lives matter? Yes, they do. And every good citizen like those that comprise the vast majority of Imperial Beach know that. Quite frankly, many are tired of me- metaphorically being clubbed over the head with it. Mayor, I imagine your Facebook comments and tonight's proclamation are well intended, but they are contributing to a divide. I don't doubt that there are a few, very few bad individuals in our community like any other community. And that's the one hundred words. And that was the last comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the proclamation for Black Lives Matter.
Aguirre, so moved.
Patton, second.
Great. City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote.
There has been a motion by Aguirre, second by Patton, to approve the proclamation for Black Lives Matter. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, I.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, I.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, I.
Mayor Protem Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, I.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, I.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. And Councilmember Spriggs will present the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two weeks ago, I led this council in a moment of silence for both victims of COVID nineteen. The worst affected of whom have been people of color. And I included and named. At least a do- at least two dozen or so African Americans killed by police and vigilante actions. Over the last few years. So I'm delighted that council has supported this resolution. And I will read it as follows. In fact, I'm going to leave out a little bit of it because it's fairly long. Proclamation Black Lives Matter, June seventeenth, twenty twenty. And I must add, as an African American and the only African American male. Elected to a city council in San Diego County for the last ten years. I am very proud to present this proclamation. And think that our diverse community really should appreciate it. Whereas in response to both currently and historically disparate treatment of black Americans. A nationwide movement has arisen to assert that black lives matter. And whereas a national movement has arisen to assert. That black lives matter in all cities within San Diego County, including Imperial Beach. And whereas the killing of unarmed black men and women, including queer and transparent and trans persons. Has left people searching for answers to incredibly complicated and infuriating infuriating questions. And whereas throughout the nation's history. Institutional and structural racism. And justice have led to deepening racial disparities and inequities across all sectors of society. And have lasting negative consequences for our communities, cities and nation. And whereas historically, when black people have fought for more Democrat, a more democratic society. The lives of all people have been improved and conversely each time barriers to black people's potential. Have been erected, our whole society has suffered. And whereas shouting loudly that black lives matter does not negate our commitment to all residents. Of Imperial Beach, but rather elevating black people's struggle to. To trust that our society values them. We must affirm that their lives specifically matter. And whereas the Imperial Beach City Council unequivocally condemns hate speech, racist violence. And white supremacy. And whereas we acknowledge with sadness and disappointment that in twenty twenty, it is still necessary. To have to affirm this simple statement of racial equality. And whereas Imperial Beach celebrates its diversity, inclusion and rich cultural history. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the city of Imperial Beach declares that the lives of our black residents matter. The lives of our black families matter and that all black lives matter. Data June seventeen, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's just great for that moving reading of that important proclamation. Really appreciate it. And for all your leadership recently, by the way, we really appreciate it. And now we have the consent calendar items. Portion of the evening of the agenda. City Clerk Kelly, do you have public comments received the email for the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have three comments. The first one is, the first two are for item number three under consent. And that item is the resolution twenty twenty sixty-two, continuing the proclamation of a state of local emergency relating to impacts from cross border pollution in the Tijuana River. The first message is from Eric Seiverson. I would like these comments right into the record. The Tijuana River has flowed unabated for two hundred ten days. Today's flow approximately thirteen to fifteen million gallons. There has been little mitigation in Tijuana River Valley since twenty eighteen. The amount of physical debris and poisoned water has brought me to tears. The same water enters storm drains of seaside point every day via tides. In twenty nineteen, I documented most main channel dry flows. We are under environmental attack. This water should be mitigated. At its source in real time, not real time now, not years from now. It's time for the city to investigate such measures. I have failed in my mission to clean. My apologies. Thank you, Eric Seiverson. And then the the last comment for item number three is from Sandra Brillhart and she simply wrote support. The last consent calendar comment is for item number six. And that item is the second reading and adoption of the ordinance that disestablishes the Imperial Beach Business Improvement District. And again, that's from Sandy Brillhart and she wrote approve ordinance number twenty twenty eleven ninety-eight. And that was the final comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. This is Mayor DeDina. The public comment period is now closed. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items number one through thirteen.
So move, Spriggs.
West, second.
Thank you. City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote. This is Mayor DeDina.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by West, to approve consent calendar item numbers one through thirteen. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, I.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, I.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, I.
Mayor Protem Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aguirre, I.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, I.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much, everyone. And now we have the public hearing portion of the agenda. And that's item number one, naming regular coastal permit applicant, regular coastal permit, design review case, site plan review, creative map. And categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines for a class thirty-two. I'm sorry, for the construction of six new residential condominium units and two detached triplex configurations on a vacant parcel fronting eleventh street. Adjacent to ten eighty-five Palm Avenue.
We're doing number four first.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. No, no, we're not. We're not. That's that's for the report section.
Okay, sorry.
This is, we're now declaring the public hearing open. Assistant Planner Open Shaw will give the report.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, tonight I'll be presenting project master file thirteen fifty nine. For the construction of six new residential condominium units and two detached triplex configurations. On a vacant parcel fronting eleventh street adjacent to ten eighty-five Palm Avenue. The applicant is Kirk Muller, who is here tonight to respond to questions after the presentation from Kirk Muller Architects. The next slide, please. The project is located in the general commercial and mixed use zone, also known as the C slash MU dash one zone. However, as the project is proposing a one hundred percent exclusively residential project. The project standards are going to be from the R fifteen hundred zone. There are currently three existing lots on this parcel. As density is going to be calculated based off of those individual lots, the maximum density is six units. But the project will consolidate those three lots into a single lot. The next slide, please. Here's an aerial of the site. It's outlined in a red box. As you can see, it's a vacant parcel fronting eleventh street adjacent to the mobile station at ten eighty-five Palm Avenue. Next slide, please. Here are images of the existing site. Next slide, please. Here are images of the properties to the east. It's the North Island Credit Union as well as the adjacent parking lot. Next slide, please. Here are images of the park, the properties to the west. It's the California American Water as well as their parking lot. And then there is an alley that runs adjacent to that western property line. Next slide, please. Here are images of the properties to the north. It's the mobile gas station and its adjacent parking lot. Next slide, please. Here are images of the properties to the south, but it's multifamily residential uses. Next slide, please. Here are images of the alley that's adjacent to the western portion of the property. This is where vehicle ingress and egress will be coming from. The image on your right is with the mobile gas station is looking north. The image on the left is looking south. Next slide, please. Here are images of the site plan. The project is proposing six new residential condominium units. They're both in the detached triplex configurations. The vehicle ingress and egress will be accessed off of the alley. And the drive aisle will lead into the attached two car garages that are provided for each individual unit. The drive aisle is in an L shape with the. Shorter portion ending at the southern property line. The refuse recycling and green waste enclosure is located western of building B, which is the building facing the southern property line. All pedestrian access will be accessed off of eleventh street. There are three individual walkways facing eleventh street that go through the private yards of each individual unit. And then on the most southern portion of the lot, you'll see a pedestrian access walkway that. Will lead directly to the open space areas and entryways for building B. Next slide, please. So the project would require eighteen hundred square feet of open space. Each individual project provides one hundred eighty square foot private open yard. Face in the front of each property as well as providing a roof deck. For each of the units, for building A, which is the building fronting. Eleventh Street, they provide five hundred square feet for the roof deck. And for building B, they provide six hundred eighteen square feet per unit for their roof decks. There's a total of three thousand one hundred sixty-four square feet of landscaping that's proposed. And then there are each individual sites have. A tree provided. And so for the trees that are facing eleventh street, those are golden rain trees. And then the trees that are facing the southern property line, those are three sweet bay trees. Other landscaping includes the bio retention basin that's located on the northeastern portion of the lot. There's vines and spalliers that will be on the fencing. Then throughout the site, there is a various succulents, organic and inorganic ground cover as well as perennials. And shrubbery. Should be of note that there's also a screening shrubbery provided with the jogged out path. With pedestrian access. Next slide, please. For the elevation plans for building A, this is the building that's fronting eleventh street. The project proposes for the entirety of the building for this building, a total height of. Thirty-seven feet. The portions of the building that exceed above the height limit, though, are the parapets as well as the enclosed staircase. But those are allowed to extend per code. Without including the portions that are allowed to extend above the height limit per code. The project does maintain within the thirty foot building height limit. And this building in particular proposes a twenty-eight foot height. Next slide, please. Here are the elevation plans for building B. For this building, the portions that, the total height of the building, including the portions of the building that extend above the height limit. That includes the parapets as well as the enclosed stairwells. The total height is thirty-eight feet. However, for the portion of the building that doesn't extend above the height limit for the rest of the structure poses twenty-nine feet in height. Alright, next slide, please. Here are the floor plans for building A. They propose, they have each a two car closed garage that you can access interior. There are three stories with a roof deck. For building A, it is a five hundred square foot roof deck. Next slide, please. Building B has a similar building configuration with the attached two car garage and the three stories with roof deck. However, this roof deck is six hundred eighteen square feet per unit. Next slide. Thanks. Here's a, here are images of the, or renderings of the proposed building design. It's a modern sort of architectural style. There's varied roof lines. And as you can see, for the third story, they provide an additional step back. The type of colors that they propose, they use a. Three different shades of stucco. They're all different shades of sand going from light, medium, dark. And there's accents that are brown paint. They also use James Hardy composite siding that kind of has like a smooth finish. And then all of the wooden sort of accents are going to be Azek composite wood. And then, well, the aesthetic is wood, but it's made out of composite. And then there are clear glass window blazing with white trimming. Next slide, please. Thanks. So the design review board reviewed the project on May twenty first and they approved the projects. With following recommendations to replace and install a new fence along the southern property line. The original fence design had sort of gaps and spaces in between the panels. With the design review board recommended to eliminate those gaps. They also recommended to reduce the height of the fencing along the north side next to the alley to four feet. For light of sight and safety purposes. The walkway for the pedestrian walkway that's adjacent to the southern property line, they proposed to. Jog that in a little bit to allow for some vertical screening strips. And then to alter the location or size of the river rocks that were adjacent to the right of way. The applicant originally proposed a two to four inch diameter river rock and they have changed that to a six inch to ten inch diameter river rock. And all these recommendations were incorporated into the plans and provided as conditions applicable within the resolution. Next slide, please. So the recommendation is that you would adopt resolution twenty twenty dash five seven approving the project. Or you can also approve the product, project with modifications. Disapprove the project or continue the public hearing to a specific future meeting to allow staff to provide additional information. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that comprehensive report. And now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. This is Mayor DeDina. Now's the time for public comment. City Clerk Kelly, do you have comments received the email?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two. The first one is from Philip Tasier. And he says, hi Tyler, thank you. Showing me the project renderings and drawings the other day. It will make a nice addition to the neighborhood, providing attractive housing. Which is most certainly needed. The last comment is from Sonia Traus, Executive Director of Y M B Law. And it's quite extensive, so I will try to keep it to a hundred words approximately. And she says, dear Imperial Beach City Council, Y M B Law submits this letter to inform you that the City Council has an obligation to abide by all relevant state housing laws when evaluating the above-caption proposal, which is the one that Megan just presented. I lost my place, I'm so sorry. California Government Code Section six five five eight nine point five, the Housing Accountability Act prohibits localities from denying housing development projects that are compliant with the locality zoning ordinance or general plan at the time the application was deemed complete. Unless the locality can make findings that the proposed housing development would be a threat to public safety, the most relevant section is copied below. And it's quite extensive, so I will just go towards the end of her statement, which she says, "The above-caption proposal is zoning compliant and general plan compliant. Therefore, your local agency must approve the application or else make findings to the effect that the proposed project would have an adverse impact on public safety as described above." And that is from, again, Sonia Traus.
Great. Is there any additional public comment? Are there any additional public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great, that's, that's great. I will wait to close the public comments until we get towards the end of the council discussion in case the public wants to provide additional comments. And for City Council discussion or questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Patton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, like you and many of, everybody else remembers, remembers that lot is filled with cars from Jean's Automotive. It was a, you know, it was eyesore. And now that we have something so cool coming in here, it's just super important for Imperial Beach that we offer these mid-level units to our residents. Sometimes there's too many limitations. And if there's too many limitations, builders won't come to Imperial Beach and build. So I think we offer these, because we have a builder and with a builder comes a lender. And together, they make a project. Okay, and so if we make too many limitations, they won't come to Imperial Beach. That's my bottom line. So I approve the project. And I think it's a super smart-looking complex, and I think it will do very well. And the, the tads of blue they have look really cool. And again, I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Patton. Councilmember West?
Yeah, so, um, this project looks amazing. It really does. I think it meets all of our zoning requirements and, and, and it is, would be a great addition, because Lord knows that lot, even though there's no cars left in it, it's a routine space that is used by dumpers to put trash in. In fact, I thought, one of the pictures that was shown actually showed a vacant ox springs in it. I think if you go back, yeah, right there. So, and I think actually, I took that photo and sent it to the, sent it to the city for getting that area cleaned up on that day. But here, here's, here's my, here's my problem that I have. This project is kind of, it's right near one of our major transportation corridors. And it's, it is, I would say, probably one of the most valuable lots left in our community that is open for building. Because it's, it's already, there's nothing there. They don't have to demolish. They can come in and put it. And I would like to see when, when developers and builders and come into our community that they're looking at trying to figure out a way to get affordable housing components inside the projects. And I, this is, there are, there are so many people in our community who are, even a mid-level house like this is, is priced out. And they cannot, they cannot afford to buy these homes. So it's important that affordable housing is a component of any future building. So I, I feel very strongly that this is a good project. It's not a great project. It, it doesn't push the limits that we need to make sure. And right now, we, we all are aware of the mandate that's coming down from the state to build affordable housing. And if we give up lots like this without having an affordable housing component in it, we are, we are essentially going to make this even harder as we have to figure out a way to meet our housing requirements of the future. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, Councilmember West. Councilmember Spriggs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember West's comments and with Councilmember Patton's comments. This is, this is an attractive project. The unfortunate part of it is that it does not provide affordable housing either for purchase or for rent. It looks like these units are going to be market rate, and they'll no doubt fetch a fine price. I, I, I think, you know, along with this sentiment that Councilmember West and I have expressed, I think we need to consider at some future point, I, I forget the technical name for it, a housing affordability plan or ordinance?
Inclusionary zoning.
Inclusionary zoning, thank you, exactly right. That will send a stronger message to developers what we're looking for and, because they need this in advance. I mean, this is a done deal. It's been purchased, designed, funded, for the most part. So there's not really anything we can do at this point. I commend the Design Review Board for making good recommendations. I think this is the kind of work that we've been long awaiting, quality work from, and good comments from our Design Review Board. And I guess the only questions that I would have to, to Megan is, will this help us in any way with our RENA numbers with respect to the moderate, upper moderate housing element requirements? And will this increase density above what zoning would allow in that area? Or, and, and likely parking issues?
So in regards to the RENA question, and I'm sure Tyler can speak a little bit more to this point. But it will, adding more units will add more units to the overall RENA numbers. So we want to see any development that can go towards that. So it will help in that instead of having a vacant lot that's underutilized, we have more units. Regarding parking, or regarding the density of the lot, this is in the general commercial mixed-use zone, but since they're one-hundred percent residential, they're limited to the one unit per fifteen hundred square feet. Also, because they are doing a lot, which, if you were looking at the total square footage of the lot itself, technically, by numbers would allow for seven units. However, we were measuring density per code by the individual lots available density. So that's the three individual lots. So each of those would only provide a total, basically two units per lot. So they're basically, they're not going over the code. They're actually perfectly meeting it insofar as what they're allowed to do for density.
And Councilmembers Spriggs, I could, I could speak to the, the RENA numbers. I have the numbers in front of me. So for the, for the most recent RENA that we're going through, we need eight hundred and twenty-five above-moderate units. That's by far the most amount for all the different income levels. We need two hundred and thirty-three very low-income, one hundred and twenty-seven low-income, one hundred and ninety moderate, and then eight hundred and twenty-five above-moderate. So this would count towards the above-moderate calculations.
Eight hundred and twenty-five, huh? So we've got six down, nineteen to go, something like that. What about the parking impact issues? Is it any worse than it would be if this were, another development plan were used?
This, this project is actually somewhat exceeding our parking requirements. This zone requires two parking spaces, which they're meeting, but usually only half of them need to be enclosed and the other half can be open. They're enclosing all of them, so they're providing two-car garages per unit. So they're, they're meeting all the parking requirements.
Yeah, and just to add to that a little bit, because they're providing ingress and egress for all vehicles off of the alley, they're not creating any new curb cuts on Eleventh Street, so that provides for off-street parking.
Thank you both very much. Great report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Spriggs. Mayor Proton McGarry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Assistant Planner Open Shaw. That was a fantastic and very concise presentation. Well, I, I very much appreciate the project. I like the aesthetics of it. I think the, the color palette is wonderful. It's very coastal-inspired. I appreciate the Design Review Board's due diligence in reviewing the project and, and ensuring its safety, especially with the fencing, raising the fencing there. I want to thank Mr. Bradley for recommending replacing the invasive palm species with native plants. I think that was a great suggestion. I think overall, it will add tremendous value to our business corridor for on Palm. I do agree with my council colleagues that, you know, meeting our RENA numbers is definitely top of mind and a concern. And I know that even if it's just six units, we, we're chipping away at our, at our numbers here, reducing our numbers. I'll just lastly add that I used to live across the street in those apartments on, down the way there back in two thousand and five. And oh my goodness, this is night and day, the difference of what this looked like back then to what it would look like now is, is fantastic. So I will be supporting the project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much to my colleagues. Just to, before I continue, City Clerk Kelly, are there any additional public comments? City Clerk Kelly, are there any additional, this is Mayor DeDina, public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great. I want to thank everybody for their feedback. I want to thank our staff and obviously the developer for working in partnership with the community. Obviously, the Design Review Board for evaluating this. Again, I won't repeat what my colleague said, but it's a well-designed project in an art, in an area. Maybe I'll be more blunt, and I think you were all pretty blunt, a garbage dump before with Jean's Union. Obviously, cars were located there and razor wire around it. And then after that, that was cleared. It was just a full-on garbage dump, homeless encampment. And we do appreciate the owners of the new gas station that moved quickly to clean it up. I think we gave them twenty-four hours when they bought that. It's a pivotal moment that I will never forget. And so I, I, I think it's important to acknowledge the transformation of that area, starting with obviously Cal American Water purchasing the building next door. All the improvements that have gone on, but all that could go on. And I think what we have to do politically and in terms of advocacy is really work with the City of San Diego and our state partners to designate that whole corridor along Highway seventy-five as a zone for investment in affordable housing and middle-class housing, a transit corridor. So we can create affordable and middle-class housing in an area that's desperately, desperately needs it, that's been neglected for so long. So I hope we can, that's something politically that we have, have to do. And what's very clear is that while during the contradiction, we're talking about the next SADAG meeting for the RENA process, is obviously that cities with the least resources are being prescribed the most housing requirements in San Diego County. And more than cities that have more resources and more land. So we want to build housing, we're going to build housing that fits our community and meets the needs of our residents who have been squeezed out of the housing market. But we're obviously going to need huge, huge amounts of money to, to do that along Palm Avenue and Imperial Beach in San Diego. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five seven approving regular coastal permit, a design review case, site plan review, tentative map, and categorical exemption pursuant, pursuant to sequel guidelines for the construction of six new residential condominium units and the two detached triplex configurations on a vacant parcel fronting Eleventh Street, adjacent to ten eighty-five Palm Avenue in the CMU one zone on the zoning map. Is there a motion?
Pat. Patton's second.
Thank you. City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Patton, to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-five seven. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thanks so much, everybody. And just to remember, remind everybody now on the report item of the, item of the agenda, and we're moving to, as voted on by the City Council, item number four will be first. And then I remember that item number three was also removed from the agenda. And so item number four is consideration of resolution, creating an ad hoc committee of the City Council to work with staff to review the use of force policies of the San Diego Sheriff's Department, adopting the tenants of the My Brothers Keeper Alliance mayor's pledge and providing additional direction to the City Manager. City Manager Hall will give the report. I actually like to, if you don't mind, Mr. Hall, I will just provide a little bit of a background on this. Based on the, obviously, outpouring nationally and in, in our city, as well as our region, on concerns about police use of force in all jurisdictions, including with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department, substantive change that have already been made with removal of a Carter and Hold by the Sheriff's Department and other police departments, including the San Diego Police Department. The City of Imperial Beach is considering how we can also evaluate sheriff use of force policies and involve the public in that process, as well as the, the other part of that process, which is to identify how we can have a much more cost-effective and safe, as well as community-based law enforcement and public safety system in Imperial Beach. So with that, I will turn it over to City Manager Hall to start the first part of the, the report, which involves evaluating our budget and comparing that to one example of our recreation budget. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. This is City Manager Andy Hall. And as the mayor had mentioned, on any number of occasions, staff has been asked to do some comparative analyses between our city and what's happening in other areas throughout the county. And we have done several of those throughout the last couple of years to give the City Council a little better insight on how we stand with our neighbors and some of the things that we might be able to look at so that we aren't reinventing the wheel, we're using best practices that other cities are using as well. And so we did some comparative analyses today on both law enforcement budgets and recreation budgets for the consideration by the City Council. Bear with me, this is kind, there's a lot of information here, and I hope that the City Council, if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. But a couple of days ago, in the San Diego Union Tribune, there was some talk about the growth in law enforcement budgets. And I'm sure that a lot of people, including some of the elected officials, saw that. And you can see on the left-hand side that the Sheriff's Department increased between FY twelve and fiscal year twenty, it has increased by about three hundred and twenty-five million, where that percentage increase in those years was about fifty-four percent. Likewise, in the City of San Diego, on the chart on the right-hand side, the increase between twenty-twelve and twenty-twenty was about hundred and seventy-two million, and that percentage increase was about forty-four percent. You can also see the growing percentage of the overall budget for both the county and the city as public safety budgets continue to be very expensive for all government entities. That's not uncommon or in Imperial Beach as well. So you can see on this slide that the law enforcement budget in Imperial Beach has gone up by a little over eight hundred thousand in, from fiscal nineteen to fiscal year twenty-one. And that's about a twelve percent increase in the cost of the sheriff's contract that we have with the San Diego Sheriff's Department. During that same time, our general fund revenues grew about four and a half percent, from twenty and a half million to about twenty-one point four million. So you can see that the increase in the Sheriff's Department is certainly outpacing the revenue growth that we are experiencing in the City of Imperial Beach. revenue growth that we are experiencing in the City of Imperial Beach. One of the things that I think is important to look at, at the beginning of this discussion is where Imperial Beach stacks up with some of its neighboring cities in terms of sworn officers and total positions in the sheriff's department. So what you have here are the other nine communities that, that use the sheriff's department for their police services. And you can see Imperial Beach highlighted there in the middle, uh, where Del Mar, Solana Beach and Santee have higher per thousand, um, sworn officers than Imperial Beach, and then Poway, Encinitas Vista, Lemon Grove and San Marcos have fewer. Right now in Imperial Beach, we have twenty-three point sixty-nine sworn officers and two community service officers for total pers- total personnel, which does not include the ancillary personnel, but es- essentially officers. We have twenty-nine point sixty-nine um, officers in the Imperial Beach station. One of the things you do when, that we wanted to look at is how we stack up with some of the other communities in our area. And so this is the general fund expenditures, the all, the overall general fund expenditures per capita or per person in your community. And on the left-hand side, what you have are the, the per capita costs or the per capita contributions for each person in the community towards the general fund. You can see on the far left that Del Mar, for every man, woman and child in Del Mar, uh, three thousand is contributed towards the general fund, and you can see as you go down Imperial Beach in the yellow, about seven hundred and sixty dollars per person, uh, is contributed to the general fund. But remember, we are a beach city, and beach cities are structured a little bit different than the inland cities, and when you compare us with the beach cities, which is the chart on the right-hand side, you can see that Del Mar again is at three thousand or so per resident, and Imperial Beach is about seven hundred and sixty. Uh, we included San Diego as a beach community. It's not purely a beach community, uh, but they do have beaches, and the reason that Oceanside has been omitted is because the data for FY twenty-one was not available, and we wanted to make sure that we were comparing like years of both fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one. But you can see that per capita Imperial Beach, um, and that, that's a good thing. Our residents are paying less per person towards the general fund, and I think that they're getting some fantastic service, and, uh, that, that goes to the quality and professionalism of our staff. I believe they are, they do a fantastic job in the community. Um, I also wanted to talk about the law enforcement as a percentage of our general fund. So when you talk about the percentage of our general fund that is used for law enforcement, when I say law enforcement in, in, in cities that have their own police department, that would be the police department. In the cities that use the sheriff, that would be the sheriff's department. So I'm not talking about fire or lifeguards or any of those. Talking about the police services in law enforcement. You can see on the left-hand side that, uh, as a percentage of the budget, National City and Lemon Grove do spend more pers- a higher percentage of their budgets on law enforcement, and then Imperial, Imperial Beach. And you can see as you go down where Del Mar spends about twenty percent of their general fund on law enforcement. And again, when you compare that with other beach cities, um, Imperial Beach is the highest beach city as a percentage of general fund. Um, and part of that is that most of the beach cities have much better funding sources, um, than Imperial Beach does. Um, and so you can see some of the disparity there, um, with our, that some of the challenges that we have with our revenue side. And then, you know, we were also asked to kind of compare that with recreation, because one of the places where we've suffered because of our lack of resources has been recreation. Right now, almost all of our recreation dollars go to maintenance of the parks. We don't have a functioning recreation department. Uh, we have asked the Boys and Girls Club to do that for the city. But again, if you look countywide, you can see that on the left-hand side, Carlsbad spends almost eighteen percent of their budget on recreation, and Imperial Beach spends about two point eight. But then again, when you look at the beach cities, and beach cities are known for their recreation, that's where the, all the residents of the community and the county come to recreate. Um, in the beach cities, we are much lower than most of the beach cities in the percentage. When you look at our recreation cost per capita, it even tells kind of a different story. You can see on the left-hand side that Carlsbad and Coronado spent about two hundred and fifty-five dollars per resident on recreation. Um, when you move to the, the right-hand side, which are the beach cities, you can see that Imperial Beach spends twenty-one dollars and fifty cents per resident. The next lowest beach community would be Solana Beach, and they spend about seventy-eight and a half um, dollars per resident on recreation. So you can see that we have a lot of needs in recreation, and, and we are, we're working hard to try to address some of those issues. Some of the other things, a couple of other things we want to look at is when you look at general fund expenditures per capita, um, we wanted to talk about essentially when you are looking at the, the general fund. So, so this, this kind of goes into a new way of looking at how we compare with other communities, and what would happen if we had the same average revenues that, and, and expenditures that some of the other communities have. So if you look at Imperial Beach, we have a population of about twenty-seven thousand people, a municipal budget of twenty-point-eight million. And so we have per capita spending in Imperial Beach of about seven hundred and sixty dollars. The average per capita spending of all the cities in the study are, is about thirteen hundred and forty-nine dollars, and the average per capita spending of the beach cities is about sixteen hundred and six dollars. So if you were to play that out, um, if Imperial Beach had the average capita per spending of all of the cities in the, in the study, and we were able to spend thirteen forty-nine on per resident in our budget, our budget would, rather than being twenty mil- twenty-point-eight million, our budget would be thirty-seven million dollars. And if we had the average of the beach cities per capita spending, our, our, uh, budget would be forty-four million dollars. So there's a lot of things we could accomplish with twenty-four million additional dollars if we had the same average um, income or, or ability to spend revenues and expenditures as the other beach communities. We also wanted to see, so how does that compare when you start looking at law enforcement? And again, the municipal budget here is about twenty-point-eight million. And so we spend about thirty-six point four percent of our budget on the public safety sector in our community. The average percentage that is expended in all of the cities is about thirty-point-six, and in, in beach cities spend about twenty-six point eight percent of their budget on public safety. So again, those same scenarios is if Imperial Beach had an average percentage of spending, um, and we only had to spend thirty-point-six percent of our budget, um, our expenditures on law enforcement would actually be six point three million dollars or six, six point four. And if we had the average percentage of the beach cities, which is if we only had to spend twenty-six point eight percent of our budget, um, that would actually be five point five eight eight million. So you can see where we're spending a higher percentage of our general fund on law enforcement, it does impact some of the other things that we can do as a community. And then, you know, one of the things we want to point out is what a, what a great job our sheriffs have been doing. Um, in Imperial Beach, um, the per capita spending on our law enforcement is two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Um, the average per capita spending in all the cities is three seventy-one, and in the beach cities, it's about four hundred and one dollars per, per person. And, and the nice thing, and this has a lot to do with our residents. We say the sheriff, but this is everybody all in. This is our businesses, our residents, our sheriff, that the, the decisions the community is making, uh, even the, the project that we just saw, bringing in some nice housing units and really trying to do the right things in Imperial Beach. We've been able to accomplish the second or third lowest crime rate in the county for the past couple of years, and yet spending less per capita than most of the other communities. So, so then when we look at recreation, the numbers are a little more dismal. Um, Imperial Beach, again, we have a budget of twenty-point-eight million. We spend five hundred and ninety thousand on recreation. That is almost all maintenance. That's mowing lawns and, and keeping things, uh, maintained. We, we, at the current time, do not run a recreation program, and the percentage expended on recreation in Imperial Beach is about two-point-eight percent of our budget. If you look at all the cities in the study, uh, they spend about seven percent, and the beach community spend about eight and a half percent. So again, playing some of those same scenarios is if we had an average percentage spending, we could spend seven percent of our budget on, uh, recreation, the budget would be about one point four million. And if we could spend about eight and a half percent like the other beach communities, our recreation budget would be about one point seven or one point eight million. So again, it kind of gives you an idea of what's happening in other communities compared to what's happening in Imperial Beach. But then if we look at cost per capita, um, we have a population of twenty-seven thousand, our budget's five ninety. That means we're spending about twenty-two dollars per resident, twenty-one and a half dollars per resident. The average per capita spending in all the cities is a hundred and three dollars, and in the beach cities, it's a hundred and thirty-five. So where you can see where we're really falling behind in recreation is if we, if we did it based on per capita, our municipal budget of a hundred and three, if we looked at all the cities, would actually be two-point-eight million. And if you look at just the beach cities, uh, and, and we could be, again, at that average of beach cities, our, our recreation budget would be at about three point seven million dollars. So one of the things we've had to look at is we've had to balance the general fund, and this is a slide that the council members have seen before. To balance the FY twenty budget, we had to reduce most of our departments and a lot of our personnel, and we had to cut two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in personnel, um, from the, from the FY nineteen budget. And so just as one of the examples that we could point out, so one of the impacts we've had in the areas of public safety is that the fire department budget over the last two years has decreased by three hundred and eighty thousand from the FY nineteen to what is proposed in FY twenty-one, they have decreased by three hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, they are second largest budget. So all of, again, we have tried very hard, and we have kept, uh, the, the law enforcement fully funded, but it does come at a cost. Uh, we have to, we have to find other places to cut back, and two of the larger places we've cut back are in recreation and in the fire department. So again, Mayor, that, that is just, uh, some information for you guys. You know, I know we're doing a lot of uh, things with the budget right now. It's kind of the end of the fiscal year, and so we've been doing some comparative analysis. When this item arrived on the agenda, uh, we were asked to share some of this tonight so that the city council could have at least some discussion with some, some numbers behind them, and, and hopefully uh, not a motion, but some numbers, so that you can see how we stack up with some of the other communities in the county. So, um, if there's no immediate questions for me, um, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for, for, uh, this, this is certainly a council item, not a staff item on the agenda.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hall. Um, so because this is kind of a complicated and bifurcated, um, agenda item with, uh, My Brothers Keeper Alliance and then the sheriff budget, uh, and recreational budget analysis. Um, I want to make sure that the council has an opportunity to ask questions, yes, technical questions on that presentation and the budget. And then number two, we will, then we can move towards, um, just my, my brief discussion of the My Brothers Keeper uh, pledge to looking for, uh, use of force policies, and then we can open it up to public comment, and then full council discussion. I hope my colleagues find that, okay? I want to make sure that I just set the context again for that, that analysis. I think, uh, nationally and even regionally, um, and then now locally, everyone's tried to balance the idea of how can we continue to maintain public safety, but also making sure that we're not taking away from those social and community services that are so essential to make sure that we are protecting our kids and our families, and more importantly, that we don't have the police doing things that actually may be more cost-effectively carried out um, by, uh, city, city departments or, or project partners. So, um, with that, I will, uh, just ask my colleagues, is there any questions for Mr. Hall on that presentation? All right, going once, going twice. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hall. Again, that was, I know that took, I want to make sure the public and the council, I know are aware that how long that took, that analysis took, uh, but that um, uh, is really important discussion, and there's, I know there's a regional and county-wide discussion with other, um, sheriff contract cities that this data will be very helpful. And again, I appreciate also, you know, I'm making it very clear that the sheriffs have done an excellent job on, uh, in, improving, um, our, uh, public safety in Imperial Beach and making Imperial Beach much safer. With that, then I'd like to just sort of review the, um, the Obama Foundation has developed a, a framework for mayors and, and cities, obviously, to evaluate, um, police abuse force policies. And so with that, their, their pledge or, our program is called the My Brothers Keeper, um, pledge to evaluate, uh, police use of force policies. And it's really a very straightforward, very simple, uh, process, um, that allows for community engagement, and obviously city council and city staff engagement, obviously that of uh, law enforcement. So it's just four parts. The first part is to review, um, the police use of force policies. Number two, to engage communities by including a diverse range of input, experiences and stories in your review. Uh, number three, report the findings of your review to your community and seek feedback. And then number four, uh, reform your community's police use of force policies, and I think we have emphasized that process in San Diego. When the San Diego County Sheriff's Department has already been, uh, initiated with the removal of the Carteret hold, um, on, and during, um, as, as part of their uh, police techniques. Um, and so, um, I, I will stop there and then, uh, allow, um, uh, and I think the proposal tonight is to develop an ad hoc committee to evaluate, to go through this process, as well as obviously evaluate on the, uh, how we spend our, our budget, our sheriff's, my law enforcement and public safety budget, and then ways we can be more inclusive to, um, support, um, additional investment on the community and social services side, so that we're making sure that we're cost-effectively using our law enforcement dollars and not duplicating efforts that can be better and more cost-effectively carried out by, uh, city agencies and/or, uh, uh, third-party providers and/or our community. So with that, I will open, turn it over to the, uh, city clerk. Are there any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, there are several comments received, and they will be read by both Assistant City Manager Cortez and City Manager Hall.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, Assistant City Manager Cortez. Um, there, we received a little, uh, over, close to fifty comments. Um, the city manager and myself will give it up. Uh, first comment, Austin Hudson.
Uh, Assistant City Manager Cortez, can you, uh, speak louder?
Yes, Mayor. Okay, is this better?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, first comment, Austin Hudson. "We need to re- allocate funds from the sheriff's department towards social services that are better trained to handle crisis involving mental health, homelessness and community safety. We need an independent review committee of the sheriff's department that has the authority to review complaints against sheriffs regarding misconduct and implement disciplinary measures, including termination if necessary. We need a public register that prevents law enforcement officers who are removed from one town department for just cause from getting jobs at law enforcement officers in another town or department. We need the immediate removal and banning of the thin blue line flag from on-duty deputies and vehicles." Lauren Goff. "As a citizen of Imperial Beach, I am writing to inspire change within our community. Please consider making the following changes. Reallocate funds from sheriff's department towards social services that are better trained to handle crises involving mental health, homelessness and community safety. Two, independent review committee of the sheriff's department that has the authority to review complaints against sheriffs regarding misconduct and implement disciplinary measures, including termination if necessary. Three, a public register that prevents police officers who are removed from one town police for just cause from getting jobs as police officers in another town or department. Four, immediate removal and, and banning of a thin blue line flag from on-duty deputies and vehicles." Joshua Nierman. "My name is Josh. I attended today's peaceful protest and rally in Imperial Beach organized by the Imperial Beach People Alliance. I do not live in Imperial Beach, but I was moved to come down from Carlsbad, where I live and show my support on this important issue after my friends Charlotte West and Paul Lawson, who live in IP, helped organize, uh, the action today. At the next city council meeting, I urge you to consider the below-action steps to take in IP, and I hope other cities in San Diego County and across the country follow the lead." There's, um, longer comments, which we're only reading the first hundred, and we'll enter the rest into the record. From Sandra Billhard. "I strongly support the adoption of Resolution twenty-two, six-six, providing a safe environment for all IB residents, especially vulnerable young people of color. Will make our community a better place for everyone. This resolution will help achieve that goal by edifying, by identifying funds and resources for services that might be better equipped than police to handle the merit of so- soc- societal problems that too often result in dehumanizing and criminalizing the most vulnerable among us." From John Strabler. "I attend Sunday's anti-racism rally at Veterans Park on Sunday, and generally support that group's effort. Especially, I encourage the City of IB to shift some funds from sheriff's department towards social services such as dealing..." Group's effort, especially I encourage the city of IB to shift some funds from sheriff's department towards social services such as dealing with mental health, homeless homelessness. And community safety. I also support a lower overall tolerance for officers who use excessive force. And those who demonstrate a level of bias against any of our subcommittees. Finally, I support a public register that prevents law enforcement officers who are removed from another. Local's departments to just cause from being hired in as an officer in IB. There's additional words that will be entered into the record. Please consider diverting some funds to social services instead of law enforcement. So suicidal patients in Imperial Beach community clinics are often taken away in handcuffs rather than having a perk team complete the com. To calm them, officers who have been disciplined. Need an independent review, not internal, please remove the thin blue line flag from deputies and vehicles. This symbolizes represents and us versus them meets that that uh heightens tensions between officers and citizens and negatively. Uh influence police community interactions by setting police apart from society at large. This is from Tia Huggins. Next comment, Michael Reyes. Today I'm writing to you because I'm concerned about the sheriff's department, I believe we should defund the police and use those funds in. To something more useful that would help people as a whole. Those funds can go to schools, help the homelessness and to the healthcare system. Have you noticed the safest communities do not have the most cops? They have the most resources. The reason I believe in this is due to the racial profiling that goes on. Why would we waste money on something that is not being just and serving as a whole? I know too many people, including myself, that feels more anxious and scared rather than safe when police is involved. Just because of our race and skin color. There's more words that will be entered into the record. Marcus Boy. Please erase the thin blue line from Imperial Beach. On duty deputies and vehicles should be buried from displaying the alter US flag. It is its use against the sheriff's uniform regulations and his US law title section. Title four, section four, respect for the flag. Page twenty nine, section L of the city's contract with the sheriff's reads. This agreement is subject to all applicable laws and regulations, therefore, it's a breach of contract to display the flag. Thin blue of silence incorporation is at the root of mistrust between communities and the law enforcement. I urge the city to erase the thin blue line from Imperial Beach. Again, more words entered into the record. Jessica Alarcon. We need to relocate funds from the sheriff's department towards social services that are better trained to handle crisis involving mental health. Homelessness and community safety. We need an independent review committee of the sheriff's department that has the authority to review complaints against sheriffs. Regarding misconduct and implement disciplinary measures, including termination if necessary. We need a public license register that prevents police officers who are removed from one town or department from getting jobs. As police officers in another town department, we need immediate removal and banning of the thin blue line flag from the duty. That from the duty deputies and vehicles. Daniel Richardson. Thank you in advance for taking the time to review my concerns. I write to you today because I'm concerned about the sheriff's department here in Imperial Beach. Our nation has a law enforcement agency that practices racial profiling, excessive use of force and excessive on warranted arrest. Unfortunately, our sheriff's department in IB has not shown itself to be immune to this type of systemic racism. And all overuse of power. I have been a physician in Imperial Beach at Nestor Community for eight years now. I have the privilege of caring for many of the most vulnerable members of the community. They have shared countless stories to me with me about being targeted and abused by law enforcement. Additional words will be entered into the record. Comment from Angel, there's no last name. As an IB resident, I know funds from the sheriff's department must be reduced or totally real relocated. Reallocated. Please use funds for social services according to our community needs. IB residents should be able to view and judge records of sheriff's individuals. Behavior whether or not that officer is in good fit for their position. Profession. We must ban all thin blue line insignia from public property. We need a national registry for criminal cops don't have a career. We want a mural in IB to honor the Black Lives Matter movement. And the IBPOC struggle for equality. Our city should pressure the county to take all of this agenda to the state. Paul Lawson. Crime statistics for Imperial Beach and the county of San Diego, San Diego reveal the most crimes addressed by the sheriff's department are misdemeanors. Most drug related. Incidents resulting in the seizure of firearms account for less than fifty percent of searches. And about one percent of police interactions and results of use of force. This suggests that we are inappropriately using system, systems to tackling violent crimes instead of allowing officers to focus on more serious issues. More uh moreover, there is an ample evidence that police interactions. This proportionally affect marginalized populations, those er- um erodes trust in police. Which undermines the purposes of policing, instead. Fund services to address the mental health and drug addiction needs to the community, then they source. Allison Hoover. As an IB resident, I know funds from the sheriff's department must be reduced to totally reallocated. Please use funds for social services according to our community needs. IB residents should be able to view and judge records of sheriff's departments, sorry, sheriff's individual behavior. And whether or not that officer is good fit for the position. We must ban all the thin blue line uh from public property, we need a national registry. Lauren Goff. IB needs to rethink the use of law enforcement, redistribute funds to help. And not hurt community members via social services. Flash the law enforcement budget by half. We need national address registry to keep law enforcement in check so they cannot get away with unethical behavior. Imagine if lifers acted like sheriffs and instead of saving lives, they actively drown people while others watch. I demand change, law enforcement need training and escalation techniques. I want, I want to say in who patrols our streets with council of community members that I can hold law enforcement accountable. Black Lives Matter. Ariel Alender. As an IB resident, I found funds from our sheriff's department must be reduced or totally reallocated. Please use funds for social services according to our community needs. IB residents should be able to view and judge records of sheriff's individuals behavior and whether or not. Have officer in good fit of the position. We must ban all thin blue line insignia from public property. We need a national registry so criminal cops don't have a career. We want a mural in IB to honor the Black Lives Matters movement and the IBPOC struggle for equality. Our city should pressure the county to take all the all this agenda to the state level. I think this is a repeated, apologize for that. Um Indigo Curtis. IB can be an amazing catalyst for change by defunding police. BIPOC have a reason to live in fear in this country because of the toxic culture of white supremacy that is represented by those who should protect and serve. There's no other way to ease the people's mind, build trust. Or acknowledge the four hundred years of systemic racism and murder that the world police represents. Richard, Richard Pilgrim. I support this resolution, as a privileged, mature white male, I have had a few negative encounters with law enforcement agencies. But as a teacher in predominant communities of color, I have seen and heard of too many such encounters. Every civic department must undergo the scrutiny of people in its sheriffs and the sheriff's department is not immune to such. Examination. We are very fortunate in Imperial Beach to have an outstanding department by all measures and examination. Of their use of force policies should be a positive exercise for all. The most difficult task in this resolution will be the examination of the fiscal impact of the contract with the sheriff's department. Additional words will be entered into the record. Ruth Cole. Um hello, I support the resolution and ask for the record, the creation of council subcommittee, instructions to the city manager for implementation. A formation of the uh My Brothers Keeper Mayor's Alliance Black Lives Matter proclamation. Please include community participation in the process. The other half of the comments will be read by City Manager Hall.
Thank you, this is City Manager Hall. This is from Dane Boulding. I'm in support of Imperial Beach People's Alliance and their mission. I believe we need to take a look at restructuring and to fund our law enforcement. And use of monetary difference to be allocated to other departments such as health and and social services, education and recreation. I believe that stopping active, passive and systemic racism is imperative as and crucial. To our community moving forward as a positive example of an inclusive community. Ramon Espinoza. Good afternoon, to whom it may concern. My name is Ramon Espinoza. As an active member of the IB Democratic Club, I am strongly in support of this resolution to create an ad hoc committee related to the sheriff's accountability. I am asking the members of the council to vote in the affirmative to create such an ad hoc committee and to report this to us, the public. Anna Webb. Good afternoon, I support reprioritizing and reallocating the county sheriff's fund to put back into our community. Since the cost for these services have increased over the past several years, it is taken away from other beneficial services such as parks and recreation. I agree that a reasonable balance can and should be found in this issue. Expoyed. I am in favor of the resolution, however, please include the monitoring of other police practices of the. And practices of the sheriff's deputies to include curb sitting and the people's right to firm law enforcement interactions from a safe distance. Free of interference, intimidation or retaliation. Gary Brown. I appreciate and support this resolution, but urge the council to partner with the county and the other eight cities that contract for sheriff services. It will take a unified, a unified approach among the cities and the county to achieve mutual understandings and set achievable goals. Without unity among the stakeholders, including the sheriffs and deputies, you'll have difficulty achieving your goals. I wish you the best of luck in your pursuit of justice, equity under the law and improved ways to foster domestic tranquility. I have just completed over six years on the citizens' law enforcement review board and hope to share a few observations. The remaining comments will be entered in the record. Martha Sullivan. I moved to Imperial Beach a year ago after searching countywide for several months to purchase my retirement home. I've lived in the city of San Diego for sixteen of the past twenty years, from Rancho Bernardo to Del Mar Terrace to Claremont and Midway. I've advocated advocated for independent police commission in the city of San Diego for the past eight years. I urge the city council of my new hometown to pass Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty six as a much needed starting place. Pete Lazik. I support Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty six. We could use, I'm sorry, we could provide public safety for less cost by considering other options. Than using armed deputies for many situations that don't require an armed response. Let's work together with other coastal cities without police departments, Del Mar, Encinitas and Solana Beach. And join forces for a beach community oriented public safety department. The port may work with us on and the beach cities to restructure the harbor police to create something better suited to our needs. You are occasionally, you occasionally need armed response, but now we have to buy one size fits all from the sheriff. Correll Jones. Hello, I have been a resident of Imperial Beach for just about ten years. In that time, I have seen the contracted sheriff deputies responding to a wide variety of calls. Most of which were outside of their scope, homelessness, drug abuse, et cetera. As such, I strongly feel we must reallocate a significant portion of our budget to increase our ability to provide social services. To our community and this money should be taken from the pool currently allocated to law enforcement. In addition, I demand open and transparent accountability as it relates to the sheriff deputies and their actions, including immediate release of any body camera footage. In the event of an injury to any member of the public as well as community led review. Or a a community led review board responsible for monitoring complaints regarding the sheriff deputies and or sheriff department. Steven Wright. I am writing in support of agenda item number four. This is the appropriate time to objectively review spending in IB on law enforcement, and I believe that under such review. More effective and preventative measures and alternatives can be identified and invested in. IB has emerged as a municipality willing to lead this and is another opportunity to do so. The black and brown community has always been systemically oppressed at our local level up to the feds. And authentic community consultation and reappropriating of funding to more appropriate measures. Are a leverage point for effectively creating lasting systemic change. Uh Beatrice Blevins. Dear City Council, I support Resolution twenty twenty sixty six. In addition, I'd like to see meaningful community involvement from the beginning with the ad hoc committee. Ariana Castro. Dear Mayor and Council, as a resident of Imperial Beach, it's time we change how law enforcement is conducted here. We are demanding reallocate funds from the sheriff's department towards social services that are better trained to handle crisis. Crises including mental health, homelessness and community safety. An independent review committee of sheriff's departments that have the authority to review complaints. Against sheriffs regarding misconduct and implement disciplinary measures, including termination if necessary. A public register that prevents law enforcement officers who are removed from one town's. Department for just cause from getting jobs as law enforcement officers in another town or department. Immediate removal and banning of the thin blue line flag on deputies. On duty, on duty deputies and vehicles. Arturo Angeles. Hello, City Council. Whether it's public health or public safety, prevention is always the cheapest, most effective and best solution. Redirect public resources to community development programs instead of law enforcement. Wen Wen Heisekala. Honorable Mayor and Council Members. I support Resolution twenty twenty sixty six and request that my comments and suggestions be included in the record. While I support the resolution, I believe there should be a specific timeline for the ad hoc review. Both for the process of the review itself as well as the ultimate action by the city council. Also, given budget constraints, there should be very specific guideline for expenses incurred in this review. Certainly, there have been extensive reviews of law enforcement procedures, if not specifically in Imperial Beach. And those studies perhaps can be reviewed for the purpose of streamlining the proposed ad hoc review here. It is proposed that a tight oversight of the review will result in concrete recommendations. And meaningful implementation by the city and additional language will be included in the record. Marco Amaral. My name is Marco Amaral, I support the recommendations made by the Imperial Beach People's Alliance. I am also in support of Resolution twenty twenty dash sixty six, so long as community involvement is meaningful. As an abolitionist, I must state that I do not believe in the need for a police force. I believe in working towards a community where we focus our resources on combating the conditions that place people in perilous situations. Moreover, affirmative action policy should be implemented to assure that voices. Represented in any future committee are from the people that undergo the brunt force of white supremacy. Catherine Kajewski. Man, I probably just slaughtered that name, if I did, I apologize. Um, thank you for working to improve the life of all residents in Imperial Beach. I encourage you to adopt policies that clarify expected interaction between sheriffs and members of the public, especially with black people. Publish data regarding infractions, these disaggregated by race and share with officers, including SROs. As an educator, I encourage you to consider reallocating money from law enforcement to efforts that provide enrichment for young people throughout the community. We will soon have a great aquatic center here. Let's diversify participation in swimming and water polo instead of bolstering the school to prison pipeline. Matthew Gonzalez. Mayor DeDina and members of the city. Mayor DeDina and city council members. I believe that with the current issues that face our society, it is time to reform. It is time for some reform of law enforcement as a whole. I believe the budget should be dispersed to additional needs of additional areas of need to include social services, recreation programs. And training for first responders that can help with mental issue, mental health issues when sent out on a call. I support this item on the agenda. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for your time this evening. Michael Carey, to IB mayor and city council, I am writing in support of resolution twenty twenty dash sixty-six, which includes. The creation of a council subcommittee, instructions to the city manager for implementation. Affirmation of the My Brothers Keeper Mayor's Alliance Black Lives Matter proclamation. I would emphasize the importance of community participation from the beginning in all of this process, working with the subcommittee and the city manager. I've lived in and been active in Imperial Beach life and politics for almost thirty years. It is long past time for these efforts, and I am grateful to the city council and staff, and especially to the members of the community who are stepping forward on these issues. And mayor, that concludes the comments.
Um, thank you, uh Assistant City Manager Cortez and uh city manager Hall, I know that took a lot of work, but I also love to thank all the councilman, all the. Community members who wrote those thoughtful and frankly moving comments, uh constructive comments and uh. Frankly respectful comments for an understanding of the balance of interests that have to be weighed between public safety, law enforcement. And obviously, social services, community services, a challenging um discussion item and and and. Pub- and public policy item, I'm confident that by working together, we can identify a way to move forward, and I'd like to remind. Um, the public that tonight we're not developing the proposals, um. For, we're not doing the actual review of policies, use of force policies, we're coming up with a structure to then in a timeline. I appreciate that feedback um to make that happen, and I would also assume just, and maybe I just, I'll start here, Mr. Hall. Um, I'm assuming this won't cost anything of the city, is that correct?
We wouldn't anticipate any costs associated with the ad hoc committee at this point, mayor.
Good, okay, that's great, um, so with that, I'd like to open it up to city council comment, I just want to make sure with city code Kelly, there are no additional public comments. And if they, if they do come in and people feel like commenting, we can be glad to read them before we uh take the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do not have any comments at this time, though.
All right, just um to make sure we go, we're gonna start from uh back, I mean not back, but. Uh, since we started with Mr. Patton last time, we'll start with Mayor Potemagiri this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um and thank you for bringing this item forward to the council and for your leadership in support of black lives and the black members and families of our community. So I want to thank you for uh bringing the My Brothers Keeper Alliance, the attention of the council. And I also want to thank uh city manager Hall for all of his work on this study. Secondly, I I also want to thank all the activists uh for organizing uh in a very peaceful manner last Sunday's march. And standing against racism in our community, our region, and our nation. And especially for all of your comments tonight, there were all, yes, as as the mayor said, they were very, very moving. Um, our nation is obviously undergoing a significant introspection and in response to valid and and well-founded truths. That uh criminal justice reform is is frankly overdue, so we need to explicit, we need explicit improvements in law enforcement. So that we can rebuild that trust, especially between the black and brown individuals um in our community and law enforcement. Uh, there are obvious racial disparities when coming comparing excessive force rates. Uh, so I'm appreciative of the mayor's call to review our city's law enforcement use of force policies. And uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to volunteer to be a part of the ad hoc committee. It is my hope that uh by establishing this committee, we can carefully adopt de-escalation techniques. By using communication distance and eliminating the need, the need to use force. Uh, I also want to thank uh our current Lieutenant Juan Marquez, who since his arrival to Imperial Beach has demonstrated a total commitment. To our community's safety and who has maintained an excellent, excellent line of communication with uh all the members of the city council and staff. And has gone above and beyond in the service to this community uh as serving as a member of the mayor's COVID nineteen uh task force. Uh, Subcommittee on Public Security, which I might add is uh completely uh entirely volunteer based. Uh, all of his members are volunteers, so thank you and your team for that work. So in addition to the racial disparities affecting black and brown members of our community, especially as uh. There, as they concern their trust and views of law enforcement, a major concern for me. Is making the most efficient use of the resources in our community, especially during uh this health and economic crisis related to COVID nineteen. We've already made cuts in programs and several other measures as Mr. Hall mentioned during his presentation. I mean, more than a third of our general fund is going to law enforcement, and it, that's, that's incredibly high, and it's unsustainable. Especially during this economic crisis, we are having to cut. Community services that need funding to address our residents who need our help and not so much a service call from sheriff deputies. We absolutely need to invest in intervention and prevention programs to help reduce crime and keep our residents uh safe and healthy. So uh with that being said, I move to reallocate a portion of the funding for law enforcement. To implement programs allowing sheriff deputies to respond to emergency situations in the community and continuing investigating crime. While being supported by qualified professionals who can attend psychiatric calls, domestic disputes, social workers who can address homelessness. Park safety and a variety of other situations that can be addressed in a more appropriate and cost-effective manner than by sworn sheriff deputies. I further move to direct the city manager to contact the county sheriff's department with a request to allow. Allow modification within the next six months of personnel in the Imperial Beach station. Once these programs have been approved by the city council. If the sheriff's department is unwilling or unable to modify the existing personnel structure. The city manager is instructed to modify the personnel at the Imperial Beach station by reducing two of the four special purpose officers. Reducing one of the three detectives and reducing one of the two patrol sergeants. Thus maintaining all current patrol and traffic deputies without compromising uh our community's safety. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, thank you so much, Mayor Potemagiri, uh council member Spriggs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would be willing to second uh my colleague's motion. Uh, I think it's very comprehensive and is consistent with the role of the subcommittee for which I also volunteer uh to serve on. Um, I, I really think that uh Lieutenant Marquez has been trying very hard, he's been involved in the community, I think he's respected in the community. Um, in discussions I've had with him, uh over, you know, over the last few months. Including very recently in connection with more recent developments by law enforcement elsewhere, I, I think he's had a, uh has a good. Sense of, of what needs to be done. Uh, I know he has limitations on what he can say or commit to, and I think that's one of the things the subcommittee is gonna have to explore. Uh, are the limits uh locally and also address the things that need to be addressed with the uh. Uh, Sheriff Gore himself. Obviously, the presentation tonight. And the public comments, which are great, and I feel very. Supported by the public comments favoring our resolution and favoring our, our um uh this. Proposed resolution right now to establish a subcommittee and really address some of these, these longstanding issues. Underlying them is something we've been talking about for a long time, and that is the tremendous imbalance between our. Budget resources and the growth of our revenues. And the percentage of our resources that go to the sheriff at a growing rate faster than our city budget. Uh, we've already, you know, had to cut back on the fire department and some other departments. And don't have a recreation department, this is just not sustainable, so. Quite apart from the um, the, the longstanding issues between law enforcement and the public. That require reform, we also have a quite separate but dovetailing related issue of. More efficiency in the provision of sheriff services to Imperial Beach. And that's why I support. The um, the motion by uh my colleague, because we've got to, we've got to bite this bullet now. And you all know, uh, my colleagues on the council, you know that, you know, I, I pay a lot of attention to our budget. I'm chairing the mayor's COVID nineteen task force or subcommittee on dealing with city sustainability and recovery. And we have delved very deeply into, you know, where we are right now. Uh, and there'll be more on that, you know, on another item on the agenda, and, and where we're going, and we are completely. Tied down, it's like having an arm and a leg tethered to a pole by the expense. Of the sheriff's uh department and sheriff's services. This is not to say that those services haven't been excellent for Imperial Beach. The question is cost effectiveness, it's not whether or whether, whether we do or whether we don't have sheriff services, in my opinion. It's how can those services be provided in a more cost-effective manner, so we can release funds, so we don't have to reduce our fire department. We can restore some services that are really desperately needed by our community uh and move forward uh as a community. That to me is our challenge, and um I really feel well-suited to address both aspects of this. Uh, of this problem, and therefore I, I support the motion and I volunteer to be on the subcommittee.
Thank you so much, council member Spriggs for uh for that, those comments, and also your leadership as well in stepping forward, uh council member West.
I'm just really happy that there's an ad hoc committee that I'm not gonna be on, because I fully support uh council member Spriggs and uh Mayor Potem. To, Mayor Potemagiri to be on that, I think they're the perfect choices, I think. The realization of this is, I have been on the record since my election um saying that the. Sheriff contract had, is bankrupting our, our city in so many ways, the, if you were to. Look back through um city manager Hall's slides, we were routinely. Right next to Lemon Grove on all of the, the, the numbers, and the reality is, is that Lemon Grove is, is. Is one, they, they are really looking at um possibly a bankruptcy in that city, and that's. The only reason why we're not in that same boat is because we have the port and they do not, so um I am very. Very supportive of this, and the, the realization is that the militarization of the police since nine eleven and the proliferation of guns on our streets. Has made the sheriffs and all of the police forces uh. Easily drawn to weapons, and it is killing our black and brown communities around the country and. And it, it is completely unacceptable, I mean, uh. It is a tragedy that everything that has happened lately, and I, I, I want everybody to think about this too, that. The sheriff in, in San Diego County is, the, the jail that they run received, though, is the. Has the highest death rate in California and is um received an F uh. Just recently, and it, on its grades, I mean, it's, it's terrible, it is, it, the second lowest is Los Angeles County, and it's not even really that close, so. And that again is targeting brack, black and brown um people, so I, I think it's important. I really think, you know, I, I, I would like to offer to uh council member Spriggs and Mayor Potem. To really look at Eugene Oregon and the Kahoots program that uh has been a model since nineteen eighty-nine. On ways that, to look at how they address. Mental health, addiction, um when, when somebody, or homelessness, when they get a call. Deputies aren't the people that are going out to, when they, when that city gets a call to their nine eleven that it's about homelessness or addiction or mental health. Deputies don't even go, the people who go are mental health counselors and um, uh support staff, and it is. It has been extremely effective and, and it's amazingly, a amazing cost savings. Um, and that city alone, the, the Kahoots program costs about eight hundred thousand dollars compared to twenty-one million dollars that the uh, the police force. So it's, it's a great benefit and uh it serves our community better, and we, that's, that's what's missing so much, I mean. I would love, you know, where I grew up in Denver, um, you know, communities, police had. Places where kids could go and, and, and if they had a problem, and it wasn't. It wasn't someplace to be afraid of, it was, it was um something that you could go and, and. If you were lost or your shoe was, or your shoes were gone, you could, you could reach out and a, a policeman would help you, but that, those days have changed unfortunately, and. I think that we need to make sure that we move forward with um reforms, and I. Um, I was amazed by the amount of support that, not amazed, I almost was just not surprised, but. The amount of support that we got from our community is great on this, and, and thank you for everyone who came out, and thank you, city manager Hall for that great. Um, presentation and also uh mayor, I, I, I thank you for um. Following the Obama Foundation's lead on the My Brothers Keeper Alliance and the, the, their pledge of, of the eight. Have eight things that they want to address right away, and I think we should go out and do that, so I'm, I'm in one hundred percent support in um. Lieutenant Marquez, you have done phenomenal now that, that since your arrival here in Imperial Beach, but this is a bigger problem than. Just our city, it's, it's, we need to join, and I'm, I appreciate, I know the mayor will be working with other mayors on our other. Eight contract cities that have the sheriff to, to come united, develop a plan based on probably our ad hoc committee results. That says, hey, here's where we need to move forward in the future, because that's, that's the way we're gonna. Our one little city isn't gonna make systemic changes in the sheriff, it's gonna take a united front, like former city manager Brown said, that. All of the contract cities and then our outlying areas as well um to join in, so last but not least, I, I think the ad hoc committee. It's very important that we put people in our ad hoc committee that represent our community, represent um. Our, our people, and it has some other types of safety in it as well, and it'd be nice to see some of, some of our uh, um, our. Our fire department, because in many ways, we haven't, since I've been on the council, we have yet to fill our twelve firefighter. Because of the budget shortfalls that we have, so um that's really important, because we need safety for all, not just one portion, so, yeah. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. West, Mr. Patton.
Yeah, thank you, uh, I appreciate and value um all the people that took the time to uh write in and their thoughts. It's like, just the fact that you did that is super meaningful and super important, and we're, we, we are listening. I know as a council member and I know as a mayor, we're, we listen to you and you, you help guide us. To the right direction, um Gary Brown said something that was super important. Um, a unified approach, we have to do this together, um, we can't do, we can't piecemeal this. Together, we have to be unified and make sure that we're together in doing this. Next comments are in, in multiple pages, uh my kids would be laughing at me right now if they're watching me. Um, so if we're looking at the sheriff budget compared to San Diego city um. Uh, budget, the sheriff fifty-four percent of our budget, San Diego city forty-four percent of their budget. That's, that's kind of apples and apples to me, um, however, you look at the recreation departments. Del Mar, Solana Beach, um compared to us, I mean, that's apples and oranges, and uh. That's, that's not acceptable, and so we need to um figure out what we can do to correct that. It's no surprise um that that's happening, and when you have a lot of kids out on the street. Uh, without anything to do, we're gonna have problems, so we need. A recreation department where kids can do things in our city. Likewise, you look at our budget to seniors, and you look at that end. That, that, I don't have those numbers with me right now, but I, I know those numbers are pretty low, what we give to seniors. And I think it's super important that we also look at to where we're heading. So not only coming in, but also going out, uh, it's su- and super important. Bear with me, please, um, so we have five hundred and ninety thousand dollars that goes to recreation. Um, and as city manager Hall said, mostly mowing lawns, and um e- even this year, unfortunately. Uh, our junior lifeguard program did not get started, and I, I still think they could get started, city of San Diego.
Mr. Patton, I support that, um, we'll follow up on that immediately, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, we need a JG program, even a, even a modified. Thank, thank you very much. Uh, we need our JG program, even a, even a modified program, right? Um, so we'll, we'll get that going. Then earlier today, we had um, some comments from Bureau Hearts and the Pilgrim, some pretty, pretty solid community members. And we had one member, um, Beatrice Levitz. She said the Office of Equity and Inclusion from the county. I've never heard of that. I think that's something we should look into and look at into the Office of Equity and Inclusion. And then finally, we want to make sure that we have our ad hoc committee going first before we start slash, slash, slash like sheriff. Let's have our ad hoc committee going first to come up with some programs. Like what do we want done? Like if we slash the sheriff and they're not there to help us, then we're putting the cart before the horse. So um, it's super important that we do the ad hoc committee first and then figure out what we want to do with the great people on the ad hoc committee. And I do support um, um, councilmember Gary and Spriggs to be on the ad hoc committee. And the bottom line is, if we don't do this right, there's, there's, there's going to be unintended consequences without a solid plan. And um, mayor or uh, maybe the city clerk, can you tell me the motion again? It, like normally the motion does not come at the very first speaker, so I'm kind of lost. What was the motion exactly? Does anybody know?
And I'm sorry, council, this is Manager Hall. Councilman Patton, one, one of the things that I should probably add with that question is that I know part of the motion was whether or not we've been able to contact the county and whether or not they would give us an extension to work with the ad hoc committee and be able to make any staffing changes after the typical, what was May first deadline. And this year they've given us till June thirtieth. I did get confirmation from the Assistant Sheriff today that they would give us initially at least an additional ninety days. And if we are working towards solution, they would give us more time, but that they would give us an extension on changing personnel. We would not have to wait until June thirtieth of twenty-one to make those changes. So, and I apologize, I should have added that at the very beginning of the meeting and I apologize, I forgot to provide that information.
Okay, so the motion was the um, how, how it's written?
Councilmember Patton, this is Mayor Protem McGarry. My, my motion was to reallocate a portion of the funding for law enforcement to implement programs that address and that support uh, our sheriff deputies that uh, address some of the uh, social issues related to social workers homelessness, park safety and, and so forth. Uh, and then in addition to that, my motion was to direct the city manager to contact the county sheriff department to discuss modifications to our uh, current contract for personnel changes. Now, uh, what my motion also explicitly, explicitly is, is proposing or proposed was uh, if we couldn't come to an agreement, let, whether it's in ninety days as Mr. Hodges mentioned or in six months, we would have uh, some sort of assurance that we have given authority to the city manager to eliminate the positions that I mentioned. So I think this is with the, this is solely with the intent to uh, have an accountability measure so that we can have reassurance that uh, the county uh, sheriff department will work with us as we move along with our ad hoc committee and we identify, uh, as you, as you, as you mentioned, uh, the car uh, and not put the car before the horse. As we, as we identify these types of programs that we can begin to implement and, and study them, uh, then we can come back and then make these, these uh, these, these restructure or uh, restructure our personnel within the contract that we have with the sheriff's department.
Okay, so, so basically get the ad hoc going, figure out what program, programs where we want to put those funds and then run with it.
Correct, but um, my, my motion I believe is a standalone motion. Um, we would have to, we would have to uh, have a separate vote for the ad hoc committee and for the My Brothers Keeper pledge. Uh, but it's a parallel effort in my view.
Right, okay, so, so um, how do you want to do that? Because you, do you want to make two motions?
No, uh, I, there's the one motion on the floor that's been seconded. Um, and uh, we can vote on that if you look, well, I mean, pretty clerk, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we should uh, you know, once the mayor expresses his point of view, we can put it up for a vote. And then um, the, the second uh, item for consideration, and we haven't made a motion yet, is the ad hoc committee slash My Brothers Keeper pledge.
Okay, so the first motion is like the longest motion I've ever heard in my life. So can you narrow that down so, so we could um?
It's very simple, so if we don't, if we, if, if the sheriff, if the sheriff deputy, that, that the sheriff department doesn't um, negotiate with us within six month term, changes or gives us the ability to make changes within our contract for personnel, then within the six month mark, we will automatically uh, eliminate the positions I described. And then with those eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars we would be saving from eliminating those positions, we can reallocate to, to other programs. That's the simplest of anything that's stated. It's a complex issue.
Make sure I'm clear, this is Mayor DeDino, um, I, I want to make, make sure that I'm clear. Was there an official second of that motion?
Yes, I seconded it. But I think there's a change in facts and I would, I would get, I would uh, put this to Paloma. The sheriff apparently has given us part of that one hundred and eighty day time period that's in your motion that you made before uh, City Manager Hall reported on his discussion with the sheriff, which um, maybe changes things a little bit because now we have ninety days. I assume from the end of June, ninety days uh, to come up with some, with the kinds of recommendations that are included in the motion, plus how to use the funds. So make, I want to think about restructuring it around that time period. That's just, that's just a, a, a thought. You know, I support the motion, but I think we've got a change in facts.
Councilmember uh, Spriggs, if, if you feel um, as I do confident that we can achieve what the ad hoc uh, purpose entails in ninety days rather than six months, I will absolutely accept your friendly amendment and uh, revise it in that manner.
Um, I, I do, I think we can, but with the understanding as expressed by City Manager Hall that we, if we're making progress, the sheriff will entertain a further extension. Uh, so that's of course, uh, gives us the option of taking whatever actions we want or we feel appropriate based on our analysis. If they don't provide the extension at that point in time. But I think we have a window now that we didn't have when you made the motion uh, to do some work. And I would say that because it's an accelerated time period, a shorter time period, accelerated effort to find best practices and do a number of things, including incorporating community. We may need to, to include some resources to have some technical support, somebody who knows how sheriffs' operations work because they always push back. Every little nickel and dime, they push back. You've got to be able to fight uh, that tooth and nail uh, in terms of what the actual impact of reductions will be. And we also need to be able to consult with recreation and social services experts. I, I think uh, Mr. Hall, City Manager Hall, that we may be looking at a short term contract, maybe ten grand or something like that, maybe fifteen in order to get the kind of support that we need to get this work done in that shorter time period. And think of it, we're looking at eight hundred thousand dollars of savings potentially, even half of that compared with just, you know, a, a few thousand dollars to make sure we do the best, most competent job we can in the timeframe that we're provided. Also, Mr. Hall, with all due respect, Assistant City Manager Cortez and everybody else on the city staff ain't got no additional bandwidth to provide a lot of the research support and other support that this committee is going to need. They're just, it just isn't there. So I, I really think, being realistic and having done this kind of stuff before, that uh, we're going to really need to uh, uh, go out and get some expertise that can work for a short period of time on either a part or full-time basis as a contractor, not as a staff member uh, that can do the research, uh, give us some information on best practices, look at different social services best practice models, et cetera. And that will enable us to do this in, in the ninety days that the sheriff has given us, I believe.
So are you sure ninety days, ninety days is every, every ad hoc we've done is?
Hey, hey, this is Mayor DeDino, I think um, it's, it's great everyone's speaking, but you need to identify, please, councilmembers identify yourself. But before we continue with this, I, I know Mr. Patton, I'm not sure if he actually had finished his comment, so Mr. Patton.
Sorry, sorry for interruption.
Thank you, Patton again. So we're looking at eight hundred thousand dollars. Is that, are we talking about one posi- one position or are we talking about five percent? And I'm talking to anybody that knows.
Sorry, uh, this is Mayor Protem McGarry, sorry, Councilmember Patton, I couldn't unmute. Um, the, the, the amount that I gave would reflect the elimination of the um, two special purpose officers, the one detective and the one patrol sergeant. That's the amount that three positions uh, salaries amounts to.
Okay, but
That answer your question?
Uh, it, it does, but we, guys, ladies, we really need to think about the unintended consequences of taking away positions before we have programs in place going. Okay, listen, we start taking away positions like that before we have the place, the programs going, we're looking for trouble. I mean, is the cart before the horse? I mean, we're talking way the cart before the horse.
I agree with that, Mr. Patton. This is Ed Spriggs.
We're being super reactive right now and we really, really need to think about our community. And eight hundred thousand dollars, oh my God, that's a lot of money to yank away from the sheriff saying, okay, this is away from you and all the good in the newspaper, but it's not good for our community right now. We can make it good for our community if we do it correctly. So I think if we say you do it or don't, I, I, I think we need some flexibility here. And maybe Mr. Spriggs, you could help me with uh, flexibility and I'm going to pass it to you, Mr. Spriggs.
If, if I may just point to clarify, Councilmember Patton, my motion was not to uh, eliminate these positions within ninety days. My motion was to, if we weren't able to come to any type of negotiation within our sheriff's contract or if they were unwilling or unable to modify any of the existing personnel structure, these cuts that I mentioned would be implemented at the, at the, at the end of a six month term. Now, what Councilmember Spriggs
At the cost of our city.
Well, that's, that's a philosophical, um, you know, uh, point of view, I think. Uh, but, but, but I, I, what I'm trying to explain is just the, 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 the nuts and bolts of the um, the technical aspect of the motion. And uh, I, I, once uh, Mr. Hall shared the ninety day uh, you know, new information and, and, and Mr. Spriggs uh, suggested uh, you know, that, that we should move forward and then move forward with the, uh, an additional consultant, uh, paid consultant. Um, I think that's where the confusion began because um, I believe that in ninety days we could revisit and, 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 and continue this conversation. And it doesn't mean that this whole negotiation or decision has to end at ninety days. Uh, this is going to be an ongoing discussion. It's going to take a lot of uh, thought, a lot of uh, effort, uh, not just from the ad hoc committee, but everybody who, who will be involved, especially community. This is, in my point of view, uh, the option for us to provide the uh, ability to Mr. Hall to make these personnel changes at the end of six months. Give us some assurance that we won't continue um, to kick this can down the road and continue to have our costs increase without having any real leverage for negotiation.
Okay, why don't we have ad hoc come back to us with some um, ideas? And then we could say, okay, these are great ideas. Now here's a timeline.
Yeah, this is Mayor DeDino, um, I, I'd like to, yeah, so we can kind of move this forward. Um, I, 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 you know, I support the, obviously the, the, the motion as it's written in the agenda. Um, I obviously would be concerned about identifying the conclusions of a study before we've actually carried out the process. And so I, I would be very concerned about, um, I, I haven't seen what the structure of our sheriff's department is recently, nor what each position represents, how much it costs. So I would trust that, you know, the eight hundred, I think it was fifty thousand dollar number reflects that. But um, I think the point of the ad hoc committee is to identify those programs and policies that we want to identify that could be, replace some of these functions. Um, and I, I don't think that list included parks and rec, which I think is an incredibly important function in small cities, which is why we included it um, in that discussion and analysis. And so, social services are generally things that are carried out um, in larger cities that have larger budgets. Um, and then as well as what would be the specific proposal to reduce um, potential costs for the sheriff's department. So with that, I just want to make sure that we're moving this forward. Mr. Patton, are you done or are you going to continue or, or it's just sort of?
I'd like to respond to Mr. Patton's concerns as, as he invited me to, this is Ed Spriggs. And at risk of, of um, of uh, of, of further uh, kind of uh, putting a context to the motion. I, I think that both Councilmember Gary and I, along with City Manager Hall, who I don't want, necessarily want to bring into this discussion, it's between councilmembers, and this is a very important discussion we're having now, uh, that we have looked at that sheriff's, at the sheriff's roster of personnel. Just, just so you understand, Mr. Patton, that this is not a willy-nilly hacksaw kind of, or butcher knife kind of approach. The positions that Councilmember Gary mentioned are positions that with, at least on a preliminary basis, based on discussions and knowledge of, of the sheriff's structure and what these people do and what their impact is on public safety in Imperial Beach, these positions probably are relatively more expendable than any others. And as an indicative amount of what cost savings we would, we would achieve as an illustration, if these three positions were eliminated, and my, I kind of agree with you. I think we should do some analysis first. But if these three positions were eliminated, that is the indicative level that we would receive in um, in cash savings would be eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That needs to be tested. Again, with a more thorough analysis, some expertise on how the sheriff's contract would work if it was amended, whether it would actually yield that much, because it may look like it does on the surface, but it may not when they add their, you know, overheads and other stuff in there. This is why this is going to be a pretty technical discussion. But at first, just so everybody can see what we could potentially save, the motion does a very good job based on an initial review of those positions, discussions with the city manager. Both Councilmember Gary and I have had. So uh, I, I certainly wouldn't support doing anything before we've had a, an opportunity, at least for these ninety days, to look at this in detail, look at what the impact of, what kinds of reductions we need, because we know we need reductions. And we know some of those reductions need to go to the general fund. And we know some of those reductions need to go to the general fund in general, and others need to go to alternative services, including potentially alternative services from the sheriffs. Maybe community service officers can do some of these functions at a third or a fourth of the cost. This is all stuff we're gonna have to look at. But the eight hundred and fifty is pretty conservatively what we might expect to save at first analysis. And to me, that's really what her motion represents. It doesn't say we're gonna cut those immediately or anything like that. Obviously, the committee's gonna have to make its recommendations before anything like that happens.
Okay.
Does that comport with your understanding?
No, because here's my deal.
This is Mayor DeGino. I want to make sure that we're consistent with the Brown Act. I think we're now having a discussion for an agenda, for a motion that's not, that we haven't actually identified and moving forward on the item as written in the agenda. I'd also like to make sure that for process sake, we don't start identifying solutions before we've had a public and comprehensive review of what the questions are and what the direction of the ad hoc committee was. I'm frankly uncomfortable identifying and saying that we've already had an analysis before we've had the ad hoc committee. And this may be the best course of action, but I think all parties, and I think our public would be better served by having a thorough, public, and open and transparent review of these processes so that we all feel comfortable how we've gotten to specific policy recommendations, whether or not that social service, recreational services, or specific items in the agenda to adopt. I feel very uncomfortable about saying that we have a transparent and open process that we've identified in the motion, and more importantly, in the discussion of what my brother's keeper talked about, versus already coming up with a narrow prescriptive solutions in our initial discussion. So, I'd like to see if we can get back to the agenda that's in the, the motion that's in the agenda per the Brown Act, so that we can move this forward. And if there's, and then, you know, I think we're all under agreement that we have to have this robust and extensive discussion that is transparent, that is open, and identifies these technical sort of financial issues related to sheriff structure. And then, more importantly, a larger secondary issue of how we reallocate and even identify how we address these growing social issues, whether it's domestic violence, drunk driving, homeless services, and of course, Parks and Rec, which we have shortchanged for a long time in this city. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty...
Mayor, there's already a motion on the floor.
On the floor that's been seconded and was not ruled out of order when it was made.
So, I think we should... Mr. Mayor, this is Jennifer Lyon, City Attorney. Sorry, I haven't been able to comment because their members were having a great discussion on this. What I would suggest, and if it's appropriate with the motion maker and the seconded, is the idea of adoption of resolution twenty twenty-sixty-six with direction to the ad hoc to come back within ninety days to propose specific changes to the sheriff's contract related to, you know, if you want to add the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar number in there, that would be appropriate. But essentially, it would be approval of the resolution with direction to come back within those ninety days to propose specific changes to the contract with the sheriff related to the negotiations in the program. That way, I believe we are in compliance with the Brown Act pursuant to the resolution and pursuant to the direction that's being given to the ad hoc about what the council wants, you know, investigated.
Yeah, this is Mayor DeGino. I would support that, but I want to make sure that we're clear on limiting ourselves to one number before we've had a discussion. We may be able to cut more, to get, reduce our expenses even more than that. So I think, that's why it's important, I think, again, not to be specific about what sort of numbers we're going after until there's a full, robust, and transparent, and open, public discussion of these issues so that everybody feels satisfied that their voices have been heard. And particularly as me, as someone who's been very involved in law enforcement, I just, I haven't seen these numbers. I haven't seen breakdown in the sheriff's department recently. And we really haven't even begun to evaluate what's possible and what's not possible. I think that's, we have to make sure that we're clear on, or more importantly, how we're gonna work with in partnership with Sheriff Contract Cities, that's an issue now. Or even how we work with the County Board of Supervisors to identify other resources that could be... I want to make sure we don't limit ourselves there in this process. When we think maybe that we're reaching for the moon, we're actually limiting ourselves and cutting ourselves short.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Mayor Protem Aguirre.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to, again, clarify that the motion mentioned some of these services that could be, you know, that the funding could be redirected towards should the negotiations with the County Sheriff's Department not bear fruit within six months. Now, that's a pretty large window of opportunity. If nothing is final before then, it's just a manner of assurance so that we have the opportunity to have these discussions with with an intent, with a clear intent that this is the direction that we want to take should these modifications not happen. Now, in response to the concern regarding the Brown Act and the language being germane, I do believe that it's germane to what we're discussing because it's precisely the County Sheriff's Department contract. Now, Attorney Lyon, I know that she made this suggestion about coming back and maybe compiling it all together. But my intent with this motion was just to have a leverage tool within six months. A lot could happen within six months. And absolutely, this has to be community-driven and led and engaged with all the members within our city and sheriff, and even the regional cities, the nine other contractors as well. The intent, again, I just to clarify, is so that we have this assurance that by then, and it doesn't need to have a price tag, as Attorney Lyon suggested, that that was in, that amount was in response to a question Councilmember Patton had, just so that I could, you know, reiterate that how much, how many resources we could be reallocating once the ad hoc work, you know, is finished and those recommendations are brought before.
I guess I'm advocating that we, I like the modified motion that our city attorney made. I think it's a balanced approach that allows us flexibility on either end and programmatically and financially, allows us to pursue all options and pursue all partnerships. I would never have supported anything of six months. I think three months is a time limit. We need to be back within three months and have a report completed, and this process completed. This is too urgent a manner to allow six months to go on. But I think we can identify all these issues within this process. But again, I just can't support anything that, again, as Mr. Patton said, puts the cart before the horse and isn't transparent, or even, again, comprehensive enough that we might begin cutting ourselves short. I think all of us understand how hard it is to implement new policies and programs. And even having a discussion with the sheriff's department about the most appropriate types of cuts to services and staffing that we could carry out. There may be other options that have nothing to do with our own substation that we may be able to pursue as well. So, I guess that's my feeling, is that by limiting ourselves right now with specific policy recommendations and technical, budgetary, financial, and staffing and structure issues, we may be completely limiting ourselves onto what can actually be achieved here. I think this is a brand-new discussion. It's a brand-new day. We have a new alliance at the community level, as well as in the county, to be more creative and innovative. And so, I, you know, I would just, I think it's good to have this robust discussion, but I think the devil is gonna be in the details and then the type of transparent and open and productive community feedback that we get, as well as our dialogue with our partner cities, as well as our sheriffs and county officials as well.
This is Patton. Can I get in? Okay, thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate what everybody's saying, and I value your comments. Mr. Spriggs and I, we were on the ad hoc committee about zoning. And this is, like you think about, here's an analogy. You could build a house. We'll talk about it later. And that's what we're doing now. Okay, we need to really do the opposite, right? Let's talk about the house, then build it, okay? And I agree with the mayor on this, one hundred percent. And I think we should follow that lead and get it done in thirty, or ninety days with flexibility. I mean, there's so many ends we haven't even looked at. But now we're trying to say, let's just do it this way. And so, that's how I feel. Thank you.
City Attorney Lyon, I'm not sure where we're at right now. I mean, we have a motion on the table. We have a motion in the agenda. So, how do we move? We have your amended motion, I think, that includes that other motion. So, how do we proceed forward here?
Well, I think at this point, this is City Attorney Lyon. It would, Councilmember Spriggs and Mayor Protem made the original motion and the second. So, I believe maybe Mr. Spriggs wants to speak related to that. But if not, then we would need to vote on whatever the original motion, or the council would need to vote on whatever the original motion and second was, unless there's some amendment made.
Then a new one.
Mr. Spriggs or Councilmember Gary, I guess my argument was, would be, or my evaluation would be that we're all in consensus about where we have to go and the need for evaluation of the sheriff's use of force policies. We're all in agreement that we need to identify ways to restructure our public safety financing and expenditures and our relationship with the sheriff's department. Let's not get the potential future details on how we structure that get in the way of moving this forward and so that we get our community engagement and move forward in a, again, in an open, transparent process so that our community is satisfied that we've actually addressed these issues in a comprehensive way without identifying and prescribing solutions and programs before we've had their input.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Spriggs, and I would have followed the, we, I think everybody hears what you're suggesting and that you've got support from Councilmember Patton. Because we have sort of the technical issue of two motions and a proposal by the city attorney to sort of consolidate them, I think that it's really up to Councilmember Gary to yield to the compromise proposal by the city attorney if she so wishes. Otherwise, we should just call the question on her, on her motion.
Thank you, Mr. Spriggs. I'd just like to call on City Manager Hall to share with the council, and I am amenable to the amendment. And I absolutely appreciate the mayor's comments and point of view. And I think that, I think that at this point, if, I just would like City Manager Hall to share with the council his discussions, because I just want to make clear that, you know, this isn't being produced from thin air. These are ongoing discussions that City Manager Hall has had and has had difficulty in having a response. But now, with his statement recently, with the ninety days, you know, it sounds like there is a willingness and openness to renegotiate this contract.
Mayor, this is Manager Hall. Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that the council knows that I did receive an email this afternoon from the Assistant Sheriff Martinez, as well as Commander Brown. They know that we are serious about looking at the sheriff's contract and making sure that we are looking for efficiencies and finding new ways to address some of these problems. I was pleasantly surprised that they are committed to helping us do that. They believe that there are some things that we can do to reduce the size of our sheriff's contract while still maintaining the safety in the community. They were open to having that discussion. And as Councilwoman Gary has alluded to, we have had some initial conversations with the lieutenant of our, the commander of our station here in Imperial Beach about some of the things that we might be able to do. And if we have to make additional changes to the contract, which personnel would be most appropriate to, if we had to have a reduction in force, which ones would be the most appropriate to leave and still make sure that our community maintains the second or third lowest crime rate that we've worked so hard to achieve? And so, we want to make sure that we don't go backwards from there. But we use these new programs to take our city to a new level and maybe move to number one. I think that we have that possibility of doing that in this community. So, yeah, and I really apologize. At the very beginning, I just got the email this evening just before the meeting, and I apologize that I forgot to disclose that to the city council. That's completely my fault, and it changed the conversation, and I apologize for that. But I believe that they are very willing to work with us. They express that. They're already working with some of the other communities on some of these same programs. They're hearing the same concerns that we're hearing nationwide and here in San Diego about looking at new ways of doing law enforcement, new ways of saving money, and finding ways to be more efficient and more effective in law enforcement. So, appreciate the opportunity to add that to the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. This is Mayor Protem. I'll finish with this, Mayor. I am definitely, like I mentioned, amenable to the amendment that was just been proposed. I would like to just reiterate my support for the suggestion that Councilmember Spriggs brought about to be able to bring on board a consultant that is, that has the expertise, and not just the expertise, but the lived experiences of dealing with these types of, you know, issues related to public safety and also to racial disparity. So with that, I'm willing to amend the motion in that manner.
So, I want to make sure I'm clear. We're gonna move forward on the modified motion by City Attorney Lyon with a potential addition of identifying a potential consultant to help out at the cost of no more than ten thousand dollars. Is that something that I'm understanding?
Mr. Mayor, I suggested ten to fifteen, but that is, that is a guess. That is within the city manager's authority. And I think we ought to just agree in principle that if it goes above that ten to fifteen, you know, that we'd come back to the council.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, this is City Attorney Lyon. I think I understand the gist of Mayor Protem's proposed amendment. So let me just see if I can speak that. It would be adoption of resolution twenty twenty-sixty-six to create the ad hoc committee of Councilmember Spriggs and Mayor Protem Aguirre and to, with direction for the ad hoc to come back within ninety days with any updates and changes to the sheriff's contract and with the ability for staff to contract with a to contract with a consultant to assist with the ad hoc's review.
That sounds good. So, that's good. Just before we continue, I just want to make sure that, I do appreciate all the commentary, again, the public, the tremendous public input, the robust discussion, in the same spirit of addressing these issues that we have wanted to address for a long time, the spirit of reform and making our public safer. I would also like to thank our Sheriff Lieutenant Marquez, but all our sheriff deputies who have put themselves on the line tremendously in the last three months during this pandemic. A lot of this issue has really moved me just by seeing how we've, you know, unfortunately, had to use our sheriff's deputies to address social issues during this pandemic, whether it was monitoring skate park use, or beach patrols, or being code enforcement officers, things that I think they themselves were uncomfortable doing, knowing that their time is better spent on identifying, you know, the criminals that may, that do and have had an impact on our community. And let me point one of those cases out. It was right before the pandemic started. We had a case where we had people commit crimes, breaking into cars along Seco Street in Imperial Beach. It turned out those individuals were on a crime spree in San Diego. Very, very, very bad guys. The sheriffs doggedly investigated that crime, tracked down the suspects. One who was then murdered, a potential drug-related or cartel-related killing. It wasn't clear to me what happened there. And then, another of them who's now been convicted of six years in prison. It took a tremendous amount of resources. And then the uh, another of them who's now been convicted of six years in prison. It, it took a tremendous amount of resources to track down those guys that committed some very bad crimes uh, in our city. Um, I think that kind of thing goes on all the time and it's that type of dogged effort that is actually have a significant impact on reducing our crime rate. So for me, it's been really eye-opening to see the kind of work on crime prevention and on tracking the worst criminals that commit the, the worst crimes, keeping them out of our city, keeping our city safe. It has had a significant impact on reducing public safety. And yet, and, and really the understanding that um, having our sheriffs do these other things that take them away from specifically making sure that whether it's meth labs or, or car thieves or other folks who are breaking into houses, don't do that. And that we can focus our re- other resources more effectively. So um, with that, um, I'd like to entertain a motion. And then more importantly, just finally, it's very important that we work collaboratively with our other cities. Um, and that's something that we're working on right now. And then number two, uh, it's incumbent upon the county board of supervisors to take a look at their budgeting just in particular. So the county board of supervisors to reduce sheriff's expenses this year, budget for 2021 by 50, uh, $50 million. Um, but then that's 5%. They've cut, I think it's between 10 and 20% of other parks and rec budgets. For cities like Lemon Grove and Imperial Beach that are low-income cities without lots of resources, the county board of supervisors should be providing block grants to make up for the fact that we can't pay for these parks and, and rec services. The irony is the cities that spend the most on public safety, for example, in beach cities are the safest cities, but they also spend the most on parks and rec. The cities like Imperial Beach, Lemon Grove, that are the poorest cities in San Diego, spend the most budget-wise on uh, almost on, on, on law enforcement. But the least on parks and rec. And those are the programs we can't afford not to invest on. And then finally, it's gonna be up to taxpayers and, and voters to really identify ways that we can help the city of Imperial Beach bring in additional revenues, whether it's from more hotels or even tax initiatives that will bring in more revenue. So we can pay for these programs and services that really keep kids out of jail. I think all of us who run up here are haunted by the kids that slip through the cracks because we don't have a parks and rec program or parks and rec center like every other community in Southern California. Uh, whether it's computer programs, coding classes, uh, ballet classes, tennis classes. My feeling is we need to have a parks and rec program that identifies every niche and need and type of program, educational, artistic and, and sports-related. So we keep these kids off the streets, busy and, and, and toward a, a, a really important and promising future rather than as one of our educators announced, talked about, it's a school to prison pipeline. So with that, I'd like to entertain a, a motion as, as.
Mr. Mayor, this is City Attorney Lyon. Um, we would just need uh, Mayor Pro Tem Aguirre to acknowledge that she approves the amended motion and then get the, the second um, by Councilmember Spriggs to amend the motion before the council votes.
And, and Mayor, this is Manager Hall. I just want to make sure that the other portions of the resolution that haven't been discussed, which is the review of the use of force are also included. We've, we've talked a lot about the budget and stuff and this really actually started out as a use of force discussion. So just want to make sure that we're following what was initially put on the agenda.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mayor Pro Tem Aguirre. I um, I had sent the uh, amendment to the motion.
So do I, a second there. Uh, Councilmember Spriggs speaking.
Good. City Attorney Lyon, are we, are we okay now to go forward on the vote then?
Yes, and just so that we are all clear, everything in Resolution 2020-66 would be adopted by the council um, with this motion.
Great, thank you. Um, and City Clerk Kelly, can you please take a vote?
Council. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. My computer just um, dropped or something. Um, I vote yes. I wish we were all eye to eye speaking. But yes.
Thank you. Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West agrees completely with Councilmember Patton that I wish we were eye to eye to discuss this, but uh, I also fully support Mayor DeDina's ballet class. Aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Aguirre, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
Uh, aye. Thanks, thank you.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. I want to thank again council members, our, our citizen participants, as well as our staff and our sheriffs for um, this robust discussion. And then I'd like to uh, we'd like to take a five-minute break. It's now exactly, at least according to the time that I have, 7:56, so we convene at uh, 8:02. I'm sorry, 8:01. Who is this?
This is Tyler Foltz.
Okay, great. Now we have, this is item number one. We're reconvening the meeting. Um, we're public hearing number one. It's uh, wait, sorry, not public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, this is City Clerk Kelly. I just wanted to let you know that Councilmember Spriggs uh, will join us in approximately seven to 10 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good. I'm reconvening the meeting. Our, my report number one. Sorry, I have to go back to the, where we started with. Uh, and that's item number one. Consideration, this is Mayor DeDina, consideration of a time extension for regular coastal development permit, conditional use permit, design UK site review plan and sequel category exemption for improvements at the southwest corner of Seacoast Drive and Date Avenue in the CM, CMU2 zone. Community Development Director Foltz will give the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this project tonight is for the Mike Hess project. He's requesting a six-month uh, extension. And, and as you see on the, the picture right here, this is aerial of the property, uh, property. This is the site before any construction occurred and uh, you may not see it here, but there's three individual lots with two property owners. The original project consisted of the back two lots, which was under one ownership. And in 2017, the project received an approval with shipping containers and outdoor seating and other amenities as shown on the images. Following that, Mike Hess was able to obtain a lease on the property adjacent to Seacoast Drive. And because of that, he came forward with a new application to extend the project to provide additional seating, additional amenities, shade structures, an entry container which was reduced to 13 feet in height, a ground cover with no decomposed granite, perimeter fencing and a wider sidewalk. The estimated completion date was May 2020. Building permits were issued in February 2020. And then the COVID pandemic uh, occurred in March 2020 and that uh, uh, led to various public health orders, regulations uh, which impacted business operations. Uh, and that also impacted the build-out of the uh, project. At our June 3rd meeting, we had an update on the project because initially we were intending to come back with an update in May for a completed project, but because that didn't occur, we, we talked about the project on June 3rd and progress uh, was requested by the council and city staff. Uh, the applicant has proposed uh, various plans of actions and milestones. Uh, and the one thing to consider is that his entitlement expires August 1st, 2020. And so a six-month extension is being requested um, and would be required for the build-out. Uh, these are the new construction schedules and milestones that were provided by the applicant. Uh, one was to remove the trees along Seacoast Drive. And as you can see on the picture on the right, that work was completed last week. Uh, the applicant also met with SDGNE, uh, a certified access specialist in Public Works to discuss the sidewalk improvements. And some of the improvements uh, took place. So they filled in the gaps essentially where those trees used to be. So right now there's a five-foot wide sidewalk. Uh, however, that's not the, the end of the work for the sidewalk. Uh, for the project, the entire sidewalk would need to be reconstructed and replaced to a minimum six feet. And that would take place uh, uh, during the uh, uh, future build-out. Uh, the final construction drawings for the container details were completed on June 9th, 2020. The fabrication of the containers will be taking place the last week of June. It'll take about two weeks to complete. Fabrication of the shade sails uh, will be taking place the last week of June. The applicant uh, intends to install and modify the existing shipping container footings July 7th through 10th. The containers would be set mid to late July. And then grading and construction on the majority of the site would take place on September 8th. And the anticipated completion of the project is now October 15th through the 22nd. Uh, all of this would be dependent on the contractors working on schedule uh, and that there'd be no additional impacts from COVID-19 or other mandates uh, and weather. Uh, so following staff's report, uh, we would recommend that you consider the extension request and adopt the resolution which would approve a six-month extension. And I'll also let you know that the applicant is uh, with us today too, if you have any questions.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Foltz. Uh, we'll go to a public comment. Um, Mr. Clerk Kelly, I'm sorry. Clerk Kelly, do you have any um, comments receiving email?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four. The first one is from T D Harris. I support extending Mike Hess's permits in IB. Have a great day. The next message is from Tim O'Neil. Mayor and city council members, I fully support Mike Hess Brewing Company's project and respective, respectively ask that you approve his request for a time extension of his permits. The next one is lengthy from Sandra Brulhart. I, I will only read the first 100 words. She says, I oppose granting the applicant an extension to complete the project that was originally approved in 2017 and which the applicant has since managed to modify and therefore delay for three years. Had he begun construction when the most recent modifications for the project were approved in July 2019, he would not be in the predicament he, he now claims to be in. The COVID restrictions were only in effect for three months, yet he is requesting a six-month extension. In six months, he no doubt will have another excuse. It is obvious that this applicant has no intention of, and, and that's the 100th word. The rest of the comments will be on file. And lastly, this is from Mike Hess. He says, on Monday the 15th of June at 9:00 PM, Mike Hess published a petition on change.org with the following statement for signature. On March 16th, our business has ordered, was ordered closed by the state of California due to coronavirus pandemic. For a while, it was unclear how long we'd be shut down, whether we'd survive as a business or be able to ever do what we love to do again, make great beer and provide a great venue for people to gather around. The city of San Diego extended all active permits automatically on March 19th for 180 days. The city of IB has not. We have provided the city a new building schedule now that we're mostly on the other side of COVID and will start some of the project in June. And he puts in parentheses, trees slash sidewalk. Some July and in parentheses, the shipping containers exclamation point. And finish in September and October and in parentheses, sales and landscaping. Signing this petition simply states that you are in favor of the city extending our permits so that we can finish. Thank you for your support. And then he states, in about 40 hours, Mike Hess Brewing's petition was signed by 1,235 people from IB and greater San Diego community. Many hundreds of positive comments were also left, which list may be provided to the council upon request. Oh, and there's one more, Mr. Mayor, from Candy Unger. Dear mayor and council members, I kindly ask that you approve the requested extension of time for Mike Hess Brewery here in Imperial Beach. Hess is part of the fabric of this city now and deserves our support. We should all be proud. He has chosen IB to call home. Please support this thriving business, business by allowing the, an extension for him to comply. And that was the final um, public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. So we're done with public comments. Uh, I appreciate that. And now, uh, public comment period is now closed. Um, if there's public, um, city council discussion, we'll start uh, with Wes, trying to make everything fair. Wes, Patton, and then Spriggs and Aguirre. And so, Mr. West, any comments?
Yes, uh, Mayor, thank you very much for opening this up. I, I fully support the extension. I think uh, if you were to walk through the timeline that he has been dealing with, I, if the Harris brothers would have, would have helped him out from the very beginning, I doubt he would have uh, really requested the initial build-out that he did. So um, I fully support him and I fully support the uh, the business to work on that. I want the start date as September 8th, as I said last to uh, said last council meeting, for a finish date on October 15th. And um, as long as COVID allows it, um, if he finishes by October 15th, I fully support a Hess Oktoberfest in Imperial Beach. So um, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Patton. Any comments?
Yeah, just real quick, you know, uh, after our last meeting, uh, Mr. Hess showed a lot of good faith. Those trees were down um, very, very quick. Um, that was very nice. We, we have to remember you know, small businesses that come into Imperial Beach, they talk to each other and they talk to, you know, throughout the county. And though Mr. Hess has had a few roadblocks here in Imperial Beach, hopefully in the end, he could tell other people, entrepreneurs that want to come into Imperial Beach, yeah, it's, it's, it's tough. Yeah, we want to make sure it's right. The council and the um, city staff, we want to make sure it's right, right? But we're able to get it done. So we want to make sure we um, have the ability to get other entrepreneur, entrepreneurs to come into Imperial Beach. Um, we're at a catch 22 here, right? So I, I do support the extension. I do, I do want the sidewalk to be done completely before the projects opened. And since we have a clean slate on that sidewalk, it'd be nice if we could come up with some sort of graphics or something we could do on that sidewalk to make it very unique. And that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Patton. Uh, uh, Councilmember Spriggs. Is Mr. Spriggs there? All right, we'll go on to Mayor Pro Tem Aguirre. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no, I'll just reiterate that I, I, you know, I echo what uh, Councilmember Patton mentioned. You know, Mr. Hess has showed good faith in, in fixing the sidewalk um, and clearing the trees. Uh, I, I definitely giving him an extension, uh, support giving him an extension, especially because uh, you know, in this crisis, he's, he's providing jobs for some of our local residents. So um, at this point, I'm, I'm, I'm supporting a approval of the extension. Thank you.
Great. Um, just to make sure, are there any additional public comments, City Clerk Kelly? City Clerk, oh.
Sorry about that. Um, no, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Is Mr. Spriggs here? I'm, I'm gonna make sure that he wants to, for any comments.
Uh, he has not returned as of yet.
Okay, great. Um, I want to thank everybody, council members, city staff, obviously, uh, Mr. Hess, all the members of the public. Everybody was against us and in favor of it. It's been a balancing act from the very beginning, but I think the goal is, is obviously like we've been doing tonight. This is a big, huge victory tonight. We're turning, we're filling in two empty lots. One is halfway to being officially completed. Or maybe not halfway, or maybe it's halfway. And then the other will be, will be starting, filling once, dr- drug addict, alcoholic fill empty lots with garbage into actually productive enterprises. One uh, housing and the other one, a thriving business to provide employment and really a center of community uh, for Imperial Beach. Uh, and brings people to our town to spend money um, and have, and more importantly, have a great time. So uh, that's a win-win for everybody. Um, I think the more that we can be flexible and identifying how we can be innovative and attracting new businesses and supporting business. So the traditional old-school model of having to spend millions and millions of dollars uh, on, on building uh, giant buildings or businesses and then having this extensive um, and really debilitating review process that only allows the wealthiest and, and capital sort of heavy entrepreneurs to uh, to build uh, businesses and invest in our community. It's the very definition of inequality. And I think we're gonna make sure that we attract more entrepreneurs of color and get more people engaged in, in being able to open a business and run a business in Imperial Beach. We need to do things to make it easier to do that and identify new innovative, innovative ways to have people open businesses, maybe they're temporary um, or maybe they're permanent. But I think that's, that's good for everybody, especially in lower income and, and, and majority minority communities. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the extension request and adopt Resolution number 2020-69. Oh, go ahead.
This is Councilmember West, some note.
Uh, Patton, second?
Great. City Clerk Kelly will take an oral roll call vote.
If there has, there has been a motion by West, second by Patton to approve the extension request. And, Mr. Mayor, did that include adoption of resolution number 202069?
I read that. I'm sorry. I'll do it again just to make sure we entertain a motion to approve the extension request and adopt resolution number 2020-69.
Okay, so there has been a motion by West, second by Patton, to approve the extension request and adopt resolution number 202069. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Proton McGarry, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Motion carried by the following votes. Ayes, Patton, West, Aguirre, Dedina, absent, Spriggs.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Number, item number two, informational item to affirm their regulatory safety permit qualified applicant list. Community Development Director Faltz will give the report.
Members of the council, in July 2018, the city adopted ordinances to allow for one cannabis, retail cannabis outlets, subject to various requirements in chapter 4.60 of our municipal code. That chapter requires a regulatory safety permit to be issued for that retail outlet. From January to May 2019, preliminary applications were received for the regulatory safety permits. Seven applications were received and met the minimums, some little requirements. The applications were received on two parcels, though more parcels throughout the city were eligible. The applications were reviewed by both city staff and HDL companies and items that were reviewed included various operational requirements such as experience, business plans, safety plans, emergency action, fire prevention plans, et cetera, and also design requirements that included facade treatments and base and top treatments, architectural encroachments, et cetera. At the end of July 2019, the city advised all the applicants of deficiencies in their applications and that revised applications were due in September 2019. Following the second review of all the applications, only one applicant who was March and Ash met all the requirements. March and Ash was deemed the qualified applicant for the property, and that's at 740 Palm Avenue. The qualified applicant list, which only includes March and Ash, needs to be provided to the city council as an informational item for affirmation, and that's tonight. Because there's only one qualified applicant, the city does not need to hold an independent selection process. Following the affirmation, the qualified applicant is going to be on the eligibility list for the regulatory safety permit and needs to obtain all of the approvals for that permit and complete all the requirements in the municipal code prior to opening a cannabis outlet. The recommendation for tonight is that the city council affirm the qualified applicant list, which has one qualified applicant, March and Ash, for the property at 740 Palm Avenue, and instruct staff to provide the official notification to the applicant upon the completion of the litigation received to the applicant process or upon the date that the applicant submits its first development application to the city, whichever occurs first, but in no event shall city staff provide the official notification later than June 1st, 2021. That concludes staff's report.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Now we have public comments. City Clerk Kelly, do you have comments received via email?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great. And with that, public comment grade is now closed. If you have any City Council discussion, I'll start in the middle this time now with Councilmember, wait, did we start with you, Councilmember West last time? I can't remember. I'm completely lost. Well, you know what? We'll just go back and start with Councilmember Patton. Mr. Patton?
I'm sorry, my mouth. Can you go to somebody else, please?
Okay, Mr. West.
Yeah, I'd like to move forward with, no, nothing to add.
Councilmember Aguirre?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Is Mr. Spriggs here? I'm not sure.
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, you have any comments?
No comments. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Patton, any comments at all?
No comment.
Great, thank you. With that, I can entertain a motion to affirm the qualified applicant list, which consists of one qualified applicant, March Nash, Imperial Beach, Incorporated DBA March Nash for the property located at 740 Palm Avenue, and instruct staff to provide the official notification to the applicant upon the completion of litigation related to the application process or upon that date that the applicant submits its first available application to the city, whichever occurs first, but no event shall city staff provide the official notification later than June 1st, 2021. City Clerk Kelly will take the oral roll call vote. I'm sorry, there needs to be a motion. I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
West, so moved.
Any additional second? I can second. Dedina seconds. City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote.
There has been a motion by West, second by Dedina, to affirm the applicant list and for staff to take various actions as stated by the mayor. Councilmember Patton, how do you vote? I'm sorry?
No.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, yes. Aye.
Councilmember Spriggs, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Proton McGarry, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Motion carried by the following votes. Ayes, Councilmember West, Spriggs, Mayor Proton McGarry, and Mayor Dedina. Nos, Councilmember Patton.
Great, thank you so much. And just for the public, just remember that we already discussed that item three was pulled from the agenda. And then item four, we already discussed, and now we're on item five. That's item consideration of resolution number 2020-64, ratifying previous actions of the city council in relation to the FY 2019, 2020 general fund budget, consideration of additional amendment to the general funds and provision of the FY 2019-2020 and FY 2020-2021 general fund budget overview. It's manager Gitmid will give the report. Thank you.
It's not unmute. There we go. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is Finance Manager Joanne Gitmad. I'll try to make this as rapidly as possible. I realize it is getting late, but unfortunately, it is numbers. So as you're aware, the city of Imperial Beach adopts a two-year budget, and the most recent budget was adopted in June of 2019 for fiscal years 1920 and 2021. This budget scan, or this budget review is going to encompass the first year of the two-year budget. Budgets are documents that link the priorities of the city council with the necessary and available funding to accomplish your goals. The budget also provides a spending plan for the staff to follow. However, that plan can change throughout the year based on the changes in council priorities or unforeseen events. The budgets are fluid and are only an estimate of the anticipated revenues and expenditures. Since we finance screwers, don't have a crystal ball. The budgets cannot contain exact results. In fact, you'll often find that staff speaks in rounded numbers. We can only work to provide the citizens, council, and staff with our best estimate of what we expect will happen. For fiscal year 1920, the adopted general fund revenues were $20,852,550. Throughout the year, there were $320,000 in revenue amendments, increasing the budget, which is considered the amended of the current budget, to $21,173,000. As of this date, staff is projecting the general fund revenues at June 30th to be approximately $21,419,900 or approximately $246,000 over the current budget. Keep in mind, this projected number includes revenues not only received by June 30th, 2020, but also revenues that are received approximately 60 days after the year end, which are considered earned or accrued into fiscal year 1920. Broken down by revenue source, you can see that the projected revenues in the top three categories will come close to and just over the current budget. The other category is projected to be below by just about $300,000. The major reason for this projection is that staff has seen a decrease in revenues received in various permit and inspection revenues, such as building, plumbing, and electrical permits, fire inspections, things along that line. Due to the fluctuating nature of this revenue category, it's really difficult to say what's attributed to the decline. It could be to the COVID-19 situation, but it also could just be to the fluctuation in building and inspection activity. The next category is taxes, projecting to be approximately $627,000 over the current budget. While staff is anticipating a decline in sales tax and TOT revenues as a result of COVID, the city did gain revenue in the area of taxes as a result of our vehicle license fee or VLF's and the successor agency pass-through and residual taxes. Additionally, staff is projecting that the general property tax and the VLF adjustment will come in above what was a budgeted for 1920. The final category transfers is projected to be approximately $115,000 below budget. This is a result of an overtransfer of gas tax funds in 1819 that's going to be corrected this year with the transfer from the gas tax funds. This next slide is just a quick way to see graphically the various categories of our revenue and the comparisons in the current budget to the projected revenues in each category. For fiscal year 1920, the general fund budgeted expenditures were again $20,852,550, and we had amendments reducing the budget by about $347,000. This resulted in a current or amended general fund expenditure budget of $20,505,200, excuse me, $20,505,000. This number is net of any capital expenditures. Currently, staff is projecting the general fund expenditures come in approximately $115,000 under budget. And this is a result of the staff continuing to work diligently throughout the year to use the resources they have available as efficiently as possible. Real quickly, for sewer and internal service funds, for fiscal year 1920, the sewer revenue county collections are projected to come in below budget, and the majority of this shortfall will be covered by sewer special billings and the capacity fees that have been collected this year. The sewer fund operating expenditures are also projected to come in under budget. So overall, it's anticipated that the operating revenues will exceed the operating expenses in the sewer fund. In regards to the internal service funds, these are the funds that record the activity for the various internally provided city services, such as vehicle maintenance, risk management, information technology, and facilities maintenance. And they have two primary funding sources, transfers in from the general fund and transfers in from the sewer enterprise. The idea of the internal service funds is that they should be fully funded by these transfers that they receive, but this has not always been the case. So staff is just planning on evaluating the current funding levels and the methods of determining those transfers in order to ensure that the internal service funds are being properly funded in the future. Well, if staff only had a crystal ball, this job would be easy. Going into fiscal year 2021, fiscal, the city was already facing a $300,000 deficit in the general fund. At that time, at the time of the two-year budget adoption, council directed staff to find a resolution to the shortfall. So for fiscal year 2021, the plan to address this deficit is as follows. First, the fire department has had a 12 firefighter position budgeted but vacant for several years. So it's been decided that that position will continue to be remain, to remain vacant for 2021 for savings of approximately $153,000. Staff does anticipate including the position in the fiscal year 2122 budget and continuing the recruitment for the position at that time. Second, staff is recommending the elimination of the school resource officer program with the sheriff's department effective July 1st, 2020. Eliminating the program results in a savings to the city of approximately $147,000. Staff has previously discussed this proposal with the council, and it's been the intent of the program. It has been the intent of the program that a portion of it would be reimbursed to the city by both South Bay Union High School District and Sweetwater Unified High School District. Unfortunately, it's recently come to light that one of the districts was unable to fulfill its financial obligations to the city at the levels previously agreed upon. Additionally, in discussions with the sheriff's department, it is understood that there's a division of youth services available within the department that is afforded to other schools in the district and that can also be made available to both the South Bay and Sweetwater High School districts. Now that staff closed the original budget gap, we get COVID-19. It's unknown how great or how long-lasting the impacts of this pandemic will be on the city's general fund revenue. The city has been unfortunate that for this fiscal year 1920, the anticipated shortage in the revenues resulting from lost sales tax and transient occupancy tax and various permits and inspection fees appears to have been offset by the higher-than-anticipated receipts in the categories of taxes. For fiscal year 2021, staff is once again anticipating a decrease in those vulnerable revenues such as sales tax and TOT, but we cannot guarantee the higher-than-budgeted results in the areas of taxes. We will not be able to get a true picture of the effects of this pandemic and how the city's revenues will react to it for several more months. This slide illustrates the staff recommended revenue adjustments as a result of COVID-19. These adjustments were first presented to the city council in the April 2019 Financial Preparation and Recovery Plan. As you can see, the recommended adjustments pertain to those areas most susceptible to an economic slowdown or shutdown. However, staff is recommending, rather than making these adjustments, any adjustments to the 2021 general fund revenue budget at this time, that we continue to monitor the revenues and make any appropriate adjustments during the 2021 mid-year budget review. It is hoped that this will allow more time for us to see the full impacts of the current situation on the general fund. And if it becomes necessary, with the approval of the COVID-19 Financial Preparation and Recovery Plan by council, the council is given the authorization to use up to $475,000 of economic uncertainty funds. In regards to the sewer fund, the primary source of revenue is the annual sewer service fee, which is placed on the county tax roll. Water consumption is a primary factor in calculating the fee. Recently, high levels of conservation have resulted in lower-than-anticipated sewer fee collections. As such, actual revenues have been trending below what has been budgeted and anticipated in the 2016 water rate study or sewer rate study. Additionally, the metro sewer system charges continue to rise year after year above what was anticipated in the most recent rate study. A new rate study is being prepared for rates beginning in fiscal year 2021, or excuse me, 2122, and it is anticipated that the study will resolve the disparities in the fund. Again, for the internal service funds, as stated previously, these transfers have to be evaluated and adjusted with the intent of fully and appropriately funding each fund. After the recent briefings with the city council, there was some concern expressed regarding the uncertainty of the various revenue sources for 2021. Staff is committed to reviewing revenues and updating the council with regular financial reports. Nonetheless, it was determined that resolution 202064, which staff is requesting you adopt this evening, should be amended to add the following recital. Whereas the current economic conditions are not stable enough to provide a meaningful financial forecast for fiscal year 202021, staff will continue to monitor the general fund revenues of the city and provide updates to the city council. At this time, staff is requesting the city council adopt resolution 2020, excuse me, 202064 as amended. You direct staff to restore the economic uncertainty fund, if necessary, back to its appropriate level with the use of any excess revenues over expenditures at the end of fiscal year 1920, and you approve amending the fiscal year 2021 budget to remove the 12 firefighter position, which is currently vacant, and eliminate the funding of the school resource officer program and its related reimbursements. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Finance Manager Gitmid, could you, could you go back to that? Because it, the third, that's not on the agenda that I have in what motions were supposed to be entertaining. So I'm a little confused by that. I have, I have one and two, but not three in here. So I'm a little confused to make sure that's what was, what you're asking for as the number three was submitted in the, was put in the actual formal agenda. Maybe my agenda is missing that. City Clerk Kelly, you're in our, City Clerk, City Manager Hall, we're just weighing on that and make sure we're all clear on that.
Yes, Mayor, this is Manager Hall. Just wanted to let you know that item number three is folded into the resolution 2064.
Okay.
That just is the amendment that is going to take place in the current 20202021 budget, but it is folded into the resolution.
And just so I'm clear, does the council have, the council obviously has to vote, weigh in on the motion for number one, but what about number two? Are we going to separate vote on that? Or is that, is that something that we're just giving direction for?
No, that's folded into the resolution as well.
So it's all number, so I'm just doing, when I'm reading, where I'm just reading number one, is that, is that what I'm doing?
That's correct. The only, the only action the council needs to take, it's action on resolution 2020 64.
So, right, okay, so item number one, it's, item number one that is outlined there. Is that, is that clear?
That's correct.
Okay, fine. Now we have public comments. Now it's time for public comments. City Clerk Kelly, do you have public comments received via email?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two public comments. The first one is from Marcus Boyd. Public comment, item five. The sheriff's department monopoly contract for law enforcement services in I. B. Is in serious need of review for blot and possible cost savings. I'm aware the computer booting time is the reason deputies are running vehicles nonstop. I'm aware the computer booting time is the reason deputies are running vehicles nonstop while in service. Has the booting technology changed? Is it still necessary to pollute residents near the substation with constantly running as many as ten gas burning patrol vehicles? And then the last comment is from the Imperial Beach Firefighters Association. And they write, the I B F F A opposes non-funding, opposes not funding the vacant firefighter position for fiscal year twenty twenty one. We believe the council should adhere to its stated budget priority of maintaining staffing at twelve fire suppression personnel. The city suspended inactive recruitment to fill a vacancy created when the incumbent left for another fire department. Sufficient staffing is paramount to meet the response demands of the community in addition to those of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Leaving this position open has a negative impact on firefighter safety and that of the community. During these uncertain times, the fire department is the last area where cuts, cuts should occur. And that is the final public comment.
Thank you very much. So then I close the public comment period and we can start with Councilmember Spriggs. Any comments, Mr. Spriggs?
Yes, am I muted now?
You're, you're muted, yeah.
Okay. Well, I've been over this. The, the cuts with respect to the the fire position that we've not filled anyway are regrettable. This, we've already discussed the kind of collateral damage that the largest item on our budget sort of, sort of eats up space for so many other things, and this is one of them. So I, I understand the, the public comment made and I agree with it. But I don't really see what other option we have other than to hack away immediately at the sheriff's positions, which we've already decided we don't want to put the cart before the horse, or cut something else in the city budget. So I think we have no choice and I think the, this has been carefully considered and you know, if we ever get back to the position where we need to be post COVID nineteen, where we have our revenues and costs more in sync, we should restore that position as a top priority. That's my view. Otherwise, I, I fully support the, the budget proposal that's been made.
Great, thank you. Mr. West?
Finance Manager Gitman, welcome aboard and I really appreciated your presentation. I think it was well done. I think it was to the point. You covered a lot of data that we needed to see and laid it out in a, in a inability to, for everyone to understand. I think, I think your slide that really showed our, but our revenue really underscores a very important point that our city is, is really on the backs of our homeowners and our, our taxable in the, the taxes that our homeowners pay is, is primarily the revenue of this city. So we need to figure out ways to, as we move forward and get out of COVID, that we can attract different ways to make sure that our incoming revenue is equal and distributed because it is not right at this time. So I really applaud the presentation you put together. And I think the safety that the Imperial Beach firefighters brought up is that safety point really goes to the the formation of this ad hoc committee because safe, you know, the firefighters are very similar to our police are required to be more than just firefighters anymore. They, they also have to be part of our part of our, their call to various homes throughout I B, not because of fire, but because of other reasons. And, and safety in our fire department has been lacking for a long time. We have not been able, we weren't able to fill that position even prior to COVID. So it's, it is something that needs to be addressed and it needs to be a focus because I know Chief French has had a hard time balancing his rotation inside the fire department because of the lack of the 12 person. So I think that needs to be a priority as we move through COVID. But at this point, I think it's, it is very challenging. I do have one question for Finance Manager Gitman. Do we know what the status of the County Cares Act? Money that was supposed to come to our city. Do we know where the status of that is and when do we expect it to be released and back to our community? Or released into our community?
Councilmember West, this is Assistant City Manager Arc. I can respond to that. There is a procedure that we have to follow through with the county of providing initial budget and proposal before, for them to assess before they approve and submit funding to the city of Imperial Beach. The deadline is coming up in a couple of weeks. Council approved this at our last meeting and we are in the process of finally, finalizing a couple of the documents to get it into the county in time. There are some progress that they are also requesting throughout the, from now till September. So our anticipation is that we may get the funds anytime between when we submit the first proposal up to September, hopefully.
Okay, great. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Cortez. I think it's important because there's a lot of, the, the less time we give, when we get this money, the less time we have to really sure that the funding we are allocating meets all the county requirements is if we, if we shrink that timeline too much, it's going to be hard for some of our organizations to be able to follow that. So the, 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 if you can help me light a fire under the county, I'd appreciate it. So I'll do that as well. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. But Finance Manager Gitman, nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Finance Manager Gitman. Excellent presentation. I concur with all my colleagues. I just want to acknowledge the concerns from the fire associations with this position. I think that as we move forward and how we restructure or reimagine public safety, it's definitely something that we could revisit. But at the end of the day, these are, we're, you know, we're in a crisis, right? And we're having to make these tough decisions and as robust as our previous discussion earlier was, you know, we're going to have to figure out how to move forward and not just make cuts, but also identify new sources of revenue and, and, and we're going to have to do that together. So I appreciate staff's ability to make these informed and educated recommendations because these are unprecedented times, absolutely. And we don't have a a magic ball to see, sure. So I appreciate them looking into this and, and it's, it's, it's tough. It's tough. It's something that we just went through at N T S and I know Councilmember West has mentioned that they've been going through it at the airport. But again, I think that at this point, this is the best that we can do and I appreciate the staff, staff's work that has gone into this. And with that, I will be supporting the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Patton?
Yeah, thank you. Make sure I'm on. Okay, I'm good. Thank you very much, Finance Manager. Normally, when people get this job, they get a crystal ball. I'm kind of surprised you didn't get one, but however, you're doing a great job. So let's look at the, let's look at the fire department. So we cut a person, we don't fill that position. Here's me with my analogy. So I'm in my classroom. I have my aide in my classroom all the time, right? So he doesn't show for a couple of days, two, three days, three days, four days, five days. I survive. I, I make it. I keep making it, you know? I make it. Some of the kids kind of suffer a little because they're not getting the attention they need, but I keep making. And that's kind of what we're doing right now. So we want to make sure we, we get that position filled and that we're just kind of not kind of making it, that we're providing our citizens exactly what they need. As for a school resource officer, I understand both schools were okay kind of letting that kind of go. However, that's needed more than ever. We, we need to make sure we kind of follow through and find out what's going on. What are the schools offering for that? So we, it'd be really nice to follow through and find out if they're not offering a school resource officer, what are they offering? And that's something you could look into and we could talk later. And then finally, I'm super proud of the city of Imperial Beach. I think we're doing really, really well considering we're, we're looking at uncharted territory with our finances. And you came in right at this time and I think you grabbed the bull by the horns. And thank you very much. And I do support twenty twenty dash sixty. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, everybody. I appreciate all the feedback. Again, Finance Manager Gitman, thank you. You've done a great job with your, your crystal ball that you're still looking for. Without your crystal ball that you haven't been given yet. And I know City Manager Hall probably has it in a box somewhere in his office. Um, what I would also like to point out is that, um, you know, I think the tragedy here is that we really just in the last few years emerged from, from the, the budget and finance sort of like, you know, zone where we didn't have any extra resources. We are finally going to start investing back in our community, whether it's parks and rock and other programs. Obviously, the sheriff's budget increased eight hundred and eighty thousand over two years, eliminating all those potential investments. And then this hit, obviously impacting our firefighters and every other aspect of what we do. I think the tragedy of, you know, a government in Washington that's running, that was running trillion dollar deficit even before this pandemic. And obviously we can't do that. We're now at a run budget deficits is that it limits the capacity of the federal government to invest in all the cities and states that are really having these crisis opportunities. And despite all the investment that's with the cares act, a lot more needs to happen. And you know, I think about all the things that we need to do in the future. We need, obviously, we've all identified the need for a robust parks and rec department. One of the things I would like though, I would like to have the community service officer or I'm sorry, the school resource officer. That should be under the ad hoc committee for the sheriff's, I think, programs to really identify whether that's what, what, what does that program do? And because that's within our sheriff's budget. So I, I think there's been a national debate on those, on those officers and identifying and really trying to determine whether or not they're cross defective. So I think that's important. And then finally, you know, at the end of the day, our firefighters are being shortchanged just in their, in their staffing. But also in the building, we've decided that it's okay to have firefighters to have this old building. You know, we need to invest in the future in a new fire department, you know, fire headquarters and civic center and public safety center, right? I think that's important. And so we have the appropriate types of infrastructure resources for our, our public safety staff who put their lives on the line for us to make sure they have the cleanest, safest, healthiest places to work, to live and work. And then number two, to make sure that our residents have access to clean, healthy and, and and rooms that provide them the opportunities to engage in civic and civil discourse. So together, right? Rather than having these small, these small meeting rooms. So with that, I just want to thank again Finance Manager Gitman and City Hall Manager Assistant, I'm sorry, City Manager Hall and all the staff for helping us move through this. And of course, all the employees who are really, really happy to cut back at a time when we're in a crisis. So with that, I'd like to entertain adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty four. Resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty four ratifying and consolidating previous actions of the city council impacting the city of Imperial Beach general fund budget.
Motion, Patton.
When I'm reading, I'm going to make sure, City Clerk Kelly, I'm reading the second part of that then, right? Because that has been very confusing. So, and directing staff to restore the economic concern fund back to its appropriate level and the use of any excess revenues over expenditures at the end of twenty nineteen dash twenty twenty.
And, and Mr. Mayor, it was a, an amended resolution? Twenty twenty sixty four?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Patton?
Yes.
Second, Spriggs. Great. City Clerk Kelly, can you please take the roll call vote?
Okay, Councilmember Patton, how do you vote?
Patton, aye.
Councilmember West, how do you vote?
West, aye.
Councilmembers Briggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, aye.
Mayor Protem Magiri, how do you vote?
Aguirre, aye.
And Mayor Dina, how do you vote?
Dina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, thank you very much. With that, are there any additional public comments?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. We received two additional comments. The first one is from Gene Hilger. And it was regarding the Black Lives Matter proclamation. And he said, while we all agree that racism is a terrible thing, the proclamation should be accurate and factual. Paragraph four of the document should be deleted since racial disparities and inequities are at an all time low. Blacks and other minorities have never had better jobs, access to jobs, sorry, education and personal fulfillment. While social change is natural and beneficial to society, the truth still matters. Gene Hilger. And the second comment that came in was for item number four, and it was from Jack Fisher. Jay Fisher. Please be sure to include others from the community on the committee that have a different point of view than the city council members. This will help to find a solution to the budget while maintaining law enforcement services that we enjoy now. And that was it, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. With that, I'd like to adjourn the open session. Thank you, everyone.